Call our May 29 budget work session meeting to order. Welcome all those who are here. A few council members maybe in transit. Those may be joining us remotely. We welcome you. As with every meeting, we start with the invocation. I'll go to council member here if he would.
Always, always. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Dear Lord Jesus, once again, we, we come to you, I come to you, and just thanking you for a lovely night. Thank you for keeping us safe and from harm. We thank you for looking over on our neighborhoods, Father. And Lord, right now, in the name of Jesus, we send out prayers and uplift to so many families in our city that are going through bereavement right now. We ask you to uplift them, Father, and touch them in a way that no human touch or voice can do, and that only that you can do. And Father, as we move forward this morning with considerations and thoughts for the 2026 budget, we ask you to let our minds be open. Let us be able to find support and success with items that we have extra needs for. We thank you, Lord, for a great staff. We thank you, Lord, for, for council members. We thank you for our fire and police, our EMS, all of those that are boots on the ground that are taking care of us. All of these things, Father, we ask you in the name of the Father and the Son and the blessed Holy Spirit, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we will, yes, sir? Okay, you got a question now?
Yeah, I'm ready to get in.
Oh, you, well, let me, well, hold that until we start the presentation. I got you. We got you notated. All right, so council, as we, as we jump into this, we'll try to press it hard and fast. We've got these other portfolios to cover. Want to kind of get into that. It may create some additional conversation on the parking lot, which, based on the list of the parking lot, it looks like we're gonna need a cleanup meeting to kind of work through priorities over there. But if we can, let's hear all of the presentations, our questions, let them be pertaining to that particular presenter. And if there are parking lot issues, we'll, we'll notate it, and then we'll circle back if we can do it like that. So we'll hit it hard, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hewitt or Yates.
Motion approved, agenda.
Yeah, all right. Motion by Councilman Mahendros to approve is their second. Second by Councilman Muhair. Discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. Are the sheriff's system working?
Yes, it should be on. It just happened.
Oh, okay. It's too, too smart for us, DJ. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Yates.
Good morning, Mayor, council. Today's meeting is kind of the, the aim is to try to wrap up and tighten up the parking lot items and respond to any questions. We don't have a formal presentation today, as we presented all the information unless there's a request for additional that we believe has been requested. What we have, too, with us is all the directors to help us answer those questions. So first, before we jump into kind of the parking lot, I wanted to go over your questions. So you should have at your seat the budget chronicles. These were sent out yesterday afternoon as they were completed. I'll draw your attention to question 22, because I know that was one of the ones we've been working on. The fund balance question at this point through March 31st. So we use a cash basis to try to project revenue over expenditures. Your fund balance above your 10% policy level is right at $3.3 million, and about $800,000 less than your 12% goal. So it's council's discretion, obviously, as to where to take that, but I just wanted to give you that number. As you look over those other questions, I won't read them to you, but there are a number of things, please, fire budgets and so forth, and what was requested and not funded in the different areas. So with that, I will turn our attention to the parking lot. You should also have at your seat the same thing that you see on the board, a couple of other annotations. So I'm gonna step away from my mic. I hope that's okay, Jennifer.
Uh, no.
No? Should I have to carry it with me? It should be the same thing on the paper. So what you have is two columns. You have annual costs. So these are items that are gonna generate an ongoing commitment in the budget, and that we would recommend if you're going to fund, that these will be funded with an ongoing source. Because if, in other words, if you fund these things without a revenue source attached to them, then you'll create a natural imbalance next year. Then the one-time cost column are those things that are one-time in nature, meaning you can use fund balance or one-time funding sources to fund those. They're generally capital or one-time projects. And I apologize if the podium's in the way and you're having trouble seeing it. I see Councilman Davis kind of craning his neck. Is that good? So what you have is, so the micro grant increases, the public safety compression, this number would be inclusive, thank you. This number would be inclusive of the 450,000 that was adopted or approved at the last work session. You have the community engagement, one FTE. This would be community engagement and open records. That's about 100,000. Boards and commission engagement, this is to try to recruit and do more engagement with our boards and commissions, including, yes, sir.
Really, one, the first one that I had, and I think we had a conversation about this, Mayor, on, at the last meeting, but I wasn't aware that we had budget for our boards and commissions, and you saying this is some form of engagement. Explain that to me a little bit better. Also, if you can remember, because I can't, I was doing my walk in this morning, and I didn't bring my bag with my notes, there was a, a board, a commission, that we spoke about at a last meeting that had a budget. So that threw me off. And now you, you're asking for 60,000. Explain that to me, and explain the engagement fund you're meaning.
Absolutely. So what you have in this, this hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, the 60,000 dollars, is the travel and training for FCYC. It's the recruitment for boards and commissions. As you know, the council has a challenge finding folks, so trying to engage and recruit better. And then funding also for next, the next commission has asked for some sponsorship funding for their field day and so forth. So in lieu of breaking all those little pieces out, what we said is let's, let's put it all in one, and we will use this, use this funding to achieve those goals.
And would any authority at all go to the appointments committee with those? Well, I'm just saying the boards and commissions fall up under there, and I didn't know if we had any form of authority.
I think the thought was, yeah, the, the citizen commissions, those are council committees, I think, a little different.
Oh, okay, okay. And then I speak wrong.
All right, did have Mayor Protem Jensen, myself, and then Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have the question that this is under boards and commissions. So you say FCYC is in this. So how much do we give FCYC a year?
Right now, for 2026, it's 21,000, I'm sorry, 20,700. We split that half and half based on actual cost with the county, is my understanding.
Okay, so I guess my, when this started 10, 11 years ago, it was $14,000 from the city, $14,000 from the county. Now I'm seeing that it's 20, and so it went down to 10 each?
No, it's 42, or 41,4. So it's 20,700 on each side.
Our part of it is. So has, and everybody's gonna like, cannot believe I'm asking this question, but have we asked the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council for a budget?
I would have to defer to Michael Gibson.
Well, you, you under oath, brother.
Oh, we're getting fancy.
I'm telling you. The, what we normally do is, no more than different than we do with any recreational program. Everybody has a supply budget. The FCCYC is a little different because they move around, they travel.
Correct.
So that budget, their travel budget is about $41,500, and then they have an activity budget where they just get supplies, just like everybody else, out the, the general fund money, the 8211. But any time that they're moving around any activities that they have, it's a shared cost, and that cost has now come to about 41,000.
Okay, and the county does put in their half?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so in that budget, and the reason why I'm asking this is, you know, every year is different. You know, one year we can have 24 kids go to Washington and have, you know, 15 go somewhere else and then go for training. Our numbers change as they come along, but what I do know is that they are going to start hosting events. They have been asked to host the state conference this year coming up. So would that come out of that budget?
Yes.
Okay, so they have to, that 40 is their travel and all of that, which I'm fine with. I just want to make sure that everybody knows where it's going to.
Okay. Now, let me ask this question. The hosting the state, did the state give a budget and say, here are the things that you have to present?
We're, we are meeting with that on Tuesday, and I will have more information for you.
Thank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. So Mr. Yates, a couple of questions here. One is, I, I thought that, I don't see it unless I'm overlooking it, that there was extensive conversation about the sidewalk, not scaling back as the recommended budget had on the sidewalk contribution. Right now, you're still showing 200,000. Where is that listed here?
The, I'm gonna defer to Byron on the schedule.
Not the schedules, the money.
The schedule, right. The, the funding, I think the request was restoration of funding. There was not funding cut from the sidewalk program, is my understanding. There was a change in the accounting of it, but not a reduction.
All right.
Service of the sidewalk program it provided.
Yeah, all right. So let's, let's, let's not get too technical, just, just for layman's terms. I saw this amount spent last year, and I see less of our amount spent this year. So I will talk to you about accounting methods in a minute, but kind of help me understand that that's not a reduction.
Sheen or Bryan?
It's a question for you, sir. I, I do, it's a question of reduction, and I think he's referring to something that we had in our presentation last week, last time, and there was a reduction in the numbers, and I would.
Yes, the numbers, not a, not a project. I'm not saying number of projects. What I'm saying is funding. So we know we don't have, we're not at 100%. Our walkability grade has not gone up. So we know we're not finished. So the amount spent last year is less than the amount spent this year. That's the part I'm talking about. And however council decides to move with it, I thought it was an item that was talked about to be added to the parking lot.
We can absolutely add it. It was on the list that I received, so we'll be, we'll be happy to add that.
All right.
Dollar value, which you'd like to see.
One time calls, one time call.
I don't see it on. No, not the street markings. It's the side, you're talking about actual sidewalk construction.
Yes, sir.
We can, we can put a, a dollar.
Well, let's just put it up there. I mean, if, you know, and I would like the number comparison that was in last presentation that showed spent previous budget year compared to what's in the recommended amount. Other question I had, so I understand, and so just council, so we're tracking this, cash basis, they're, they're counting what's on hand versus what's coming, okay? And then it switches during the year at some point to anticipate money coming in. So does this exclude the money that hasn't been received for bond reimbursements? So you know, where we put out our money, and then we issue some bonds to get our money back. So since it's accrual, since you're showing it as a cash basis, is that calculated into this because we haven't received the checks back from the bond?
That wouldn't impact this portion of the analysis. What that would impact is the fund balance and the capital funds.
That, that's right.
So it's not, it's not part of your general fund balance. So that bond's receivable that we have hasn't been received. And what this, what this doesn't account for is any overage we may have in the sales tax under the new agreement with the county, as well as any encumbrances we will have to carry forward.
I'm, I'm tracking.
Or any of those other obligations that we have to do. So this is as of the end of March.
I'm tracking all of that. What I'm, what I'm asking is, the amount that we sent out to be reimbursed was also in her presentation. So any bond that we've used general fund for that we have not received the check back from issuing the bonds is not in this calculation?
Right, but it wouldn't be money you can add because it's already accounted for and expended. So that's, that's the cash management side of the equation. That is, from a fund balance, from an expenditure appropriation perspective, there's zero difference in money outlaid from anticipated bonds versus money with real bond proceeds. That's only a cash difference. So that wouldn't change your fund balances because you book a receivable and anticipated revenue against that as the source of funds.
I, I get, I get the philosophy of it. I'm, I'm just not understanding it. So I guess the number that I'm trying to get to is the amount that is yet to come. Do you have that from bond issuances, from reimbursements, from?
I believe after this year, all 25 million dollars of GO bonds will be fully expended, and then will go to market. But what I'm tell, what I'm saying is that, for clarity purposes, I want to be sure we understand, the 25 million that we go to market and borrow, coming back to the city, doesn't change your appropriable funds. It just replaces a receivable with cash. So for all intents and purposes, on your balance sheet, that asset exists as receivable. When you get it as cash, it becomes cash, but it doesn't change, you still only have.
I, 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 I guess you're giving me, you're getting me back to the, I understand the principle of what you're saying, right? The question that I'm asking at this point is, the money that we put out came from the what, general fund?
It came from the pooled fund balance of the city. So all funds, we manage all of our funds in one, one accounting investment pool.
Called the general fund?
Not the general fund, it's pooled cash. So on your books, right, you have general fund and all the other funds. Those are accounting and appropriation units. There is a cash basis where we manage our investments. We have receivables, just like you would in your private business, we have receivables and we have payables.
Got all that.
Right? So as we have the pay, the receivable.
I understand that it, that it comes down, your receivable comes down, you replace it with cash. I get that. What I'm talking about right now is cash on hand. So when you, when it was time for them to pay a contractor who completed some work that is bondable, we wrote a check and the money came out of what balance? This one?
It doesn't come out of your fund balance.
Because you've already, you're already encumbered it, is what you're saying?
Right, so.
So when that money comes, okay, let's stick to that. So when you do the contract for a million, you encumber a million. So what you're saying is that when we expended it, it came out of that encumbered million?
Correct. It came out, it came out of that.
I got you. Right, but that million originally came out of the general fund. Like, we took money out of general fund and set it aside for this purpose. So when it comes back, it's going back to an encumbered fund, even though the work that it was encumbered for has already been done? That's the part I'm not getting.
No, sir. So it doesn't come from the general fund or any of the funds. It comes from our pooled cash. Okay, so when, funds are a construct of appropriation. So when you talk about appropriation of funds, you're committing cash, right? When we have receivables and payables, those are cash receipts in and out, and assets. When we talk about appropriation, and when we talk about fund balance, we talk about available cash for appropriation. When you appropriate bonds, okay, we appropriate essentially a receivable that says we're going to go to the future. You do a reimbursement resolution. We're gonna go to the market in the future, and we're gonna borrow that money.
Tracking.
Okay? You don't back that money with another appropriation.
And I'm not saying that. So what I'm saying is, when it's time to pay the contractor, you can't write him a voucher that says receivable. You got money that you pay him.
Right, you have cash.
Right, and so when that money is paid back, and that project is already complete- Right, and so when that money is paid back and that project is already completed and closed out, that money goes where? Because it was paying back money that was set aside originally, yes, sir.
So on your books.
Not on the books, in reality.
In reality.
Yeah.
That cash comes in.
Yep.
Liquidated receivable.
Yep.
And it's still part of your existing fund balance. So your fund balances, the, the, the three point two million, three point three million dollars I showed you today, is all inclusive of your receivables and payables.
Okay, so even though you're on a cash basis, you're counting money before it came back in?
Well, we started with.
Which is a cruel basis.
Twenty twenty-four balance. So you, when you go to the bond market, it doesn't add to your appropriable fund balance. It just replaces your cash receivable with real cash on the books, on your assets. So it does, because you borrowed the money, once you appropriate the twenty-five million, you only get a twenty-five million dollar appropriation out of it. You can't, there's not additional money coming in that says we're gonna get twenty-five plus. And we didn't spend the twenty-five plus, we only spent the twenty-five with the receivable on books for the twenty-four.
I, 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 I got you. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll have a more conversation, because I don't, I don't want to get us too far in the weeds, but.
Before we pivot from your question, I'm sorry. On the backside of it, what was the, what was the interest?
Well, the, the interest is, is that we're showing right now, even though we've received extra revenue in bond funds, according to question twenty-two, the answer to twenty-two. We've received extra three cent or whatever was approved by voters for specific projects. We're spending less because we said we accelerated it out of cash on hand that we had, and we're going to the bond market to repay ourselves, but it's still not factored in or shown here. Plus, you're saying that we're below the twelve percent with a six percent, six cent above revenue neutral number. So if you don't pass the six percent revenue neutral number, you're showing that we're still short of the goal. And that, I'm not, it's not accounting for something. Because even if you do what you said, take cash, you took one asset and replaced it with accounts receivable. So asset to asset, just changed what you call it on paper. But practical purposes, you took a million dollars and set it aside for sidewalks. We spent it, and then when it's time to pay the million back, I'm not tracking where that money comes back to. Because it wouldn't need to still be encumbered because you've already completed what you did. You're just paying yourself back. Like, when PWC comes in, and they've laid sewer out west, and they come in and want us to assess so they can get their money back, that's cash that they put back to work somewhere. And so I'm not tracking his answer to how that doesn't go back into the pot.
Well, what, Mayor.
Well, he, he's saying it doesn't, so I'm, but I can, I can get into that a little bit.
Yeah, and, and I would welcome that, and would, will definitely will set up a time, because I think that between Jeff and our new CFO to understand better your question, this could be one of those topics where we do a deeper dive in, in, in finance. And we have some accounting majors on, on council as well, but.
I understand the principles of it.
Well, that's just it, it is, there is, we're mixing the twenty-five million dollars in infrastructure bonds as new cash with whether or not that is an acceleration of existing projects.
No, 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 no.
But, no, no, we are, we are. That's, that's, I think that's the genesis of some of the questions. And if we're able to maybe get offline and pull out the board.
No problem.
And then we can actually draw out, because I think you, you raised an interesting point. The money comes out of this pot, we spend it over here, then we go to the market, and the market gives us the money back, and you just want to see visually where that money goes into the pot, and then how that can be redeployed.
Correct, and then the last thing is, where, where is the answer to the closeout fund amount? I didn't see that in, in the answer for twenty-two. So the funds that are closed out or anticipated to be closed out, that haven't been closed out as of March, what's that number?
You're talking about the capital projects?
Yes, sir.
So the capital projects, would it be in the general fund? They would be in each of those funds, and all of the closeout funds have been put into projects for twenty-six going forward. Those were listed in your book, and I believe that was another question, one of the other questions that was answered.
So every project that was closed out, instead of it coming back for council, has already been respent before we can?
It's recommended in your cap.
Do you have a list of, of, or, or an amount, what we started with?
Absolutely, it is in your document on page, page two thirty-nine in your CIP document.
All right, all right, I'll go to Councilman Mahndros. Is it two thirty-one?
Two thirty-nine. And which question was that? Can't really, I believe that was one of the questions.
Councilman Mahndros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I got several questions. The more, the more we're talking, the more questions I get. To piggyback on one of your questions, Mr. Mayor, on the Budget Chronicles, I guess, question twenty-two. With this proposed fund balance, after we use those funds of the general fund balance for twenty twenty-six, we're talking about using approximately five point two million, correct?
Right.
So what, does that figure include the approximately, what was it, three and a half million we're getting from the county for sales tax?
It does not.
So that's not in that?
That is not.
Okay, that was question one. Question two, to piggyback on Mayor Protem and I think Councilman Hares, Dr. Hares' question about boards and commissions. So we're out of that sixty on the board for boards and commissions, about twenty-one is Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, right?
Of that sixty, forty-one is, we can reduce it by the twenty-one from the county. We found, that information was late coming this morning after we'd already put forward, put forward the parking lot. So this number can be reduced to forty thousand.
Because twenty thousand's coming from the county.
Twenty, twenty thousand's coming from the county.
So we got round numbers if we forget about the one thousand. So we got twenty thousand going to Fayetteville Cumberland Youth of Fayetteville, City of Fayetteville money, correct?
Correct.
And then what's the other twenty thousand, or to ask it a different way? How much is proposed to go to Fayetteville next, and how much is used for any other board or commission? And then how much is left over for marketing these vacancies on those boards and commissions?
So it'd be right around fifteen for.
Next, for the marketing?
About four to five thousand for Fayetteville next.
For an event or?
For an event.
Or events? Okay.
The difference, the difference in working name and other boards and commissions cost.
I think in the future it'd be good to break that number down, like if we have another work session. Question three, again, piggybacking on the mayor's sidewalk funding question. And did I hear you, Mr. Yates, say that you gave a year? And I don't remember what that year was, that we're gonna expend the twenty-five million from the twenty twenty-three infrastructure GO bond? What year was that?
I believe in the year coming up.
In twenty-six or twenty-seven?
We exhausted the twenty-five million as of twenty-six, that we will have exhausted that.
If not twenty-six, twenty-seven. So that was twenty-five million, it was not all for sidewalks, part of that was for sidewalks. But I think, I don't know if this piggybacks on, if this is what the mayor was asking, or if not, I'm asking it. So between our budget book and our CIP book, what page or pages can I find, can we find, how much money are we spending on sidewalks in twenty twenty-six? That's what I'd like to know. I, I don't need it now, but I need, you know, I think we need to, it's gotta be in here, right?
I'm aware, all these books.
What pages, in the CIP book or the budget book, where can we find how much money?
It's question number five. Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
And that's the one that I think the mayor was referring to.
So that matrix right there, that chart is in our Budget Chronicles, but it's not, it's not in the budget or the CIP project?
It's in the budget, it's not in the CIP, I don't want to be worried.
Okay, so, yeah, when you find those pages, I, I appreciate that. And then the last question, Mr. Mayor, the, did you say pooled cash?
Correct.
So in that pooled cash, we're commingling general funds and enterprise funds?
All funds, all the cities cash, so.
So if it's airport dollars, stormwater dollars, or solid waste dollars, they go into pooled cash with general fund dollars?
Correct, and they're all invested. And then at the end of the year, we do, when we do to close the books, we do a daily cash average, and we allocate out the interest earnings in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. This is the standard governmental accounting, multiple fund accounting process.
And that was my next question, I appreciate that, because I'm sure it's a practice, I was just curious if it was the best practice.
It is the, it is the recommended practice and the standard across governmental accounting. Because governmental accounting is unique in that it's fund accounting, and because you have appropriations, which typically businesses don't, you have appropriations and estimated revenues that sit on top of that. So it's really two different, they're related, but they're two kind of different exercises. Pool of cash management is an exercise in investments and daily cash. Appropriation is a legislative and.
Gotcha.
Appropriate, authority.
So each fund has its own, for lack of a better word, it might not be using the right word, ledger, or whatever?
Ledger's the right word.
Okay.
The general ledger is broken up into chunks.
I think I'm good temporarily. All right.
One thirty.
So pages one thirty and one thirty-one, and then following that is the detail around those projects.
Councilmember Davis.
So I heard you mention Fayetteville next. That request was for fifteen thousand for Fayetteville next, not five thousand to be inside of that. So I'm trying to figure out where that funding went.
Okay, we'll have to do some research and find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have it off the top of my head. The last time I, the last request I remember seeing of that, I think it was three to four thousand.
Yeah, more than that, thank you.
Jedy, Fayetteville next request, how much was the Fayetteville next request?
They had originally requested about five thousand dollars, and then came back and gave an additional budget with additional events that they had proposed to potentially do with funding in the community for another about ten thousand. So about fifteen all told. And those were specifically tied to community events that they wanted to do with engagement.
So we need to come back to that.
Well, if you do the sixty, because of the piece we talked about where the county has, the sixty will be sufficient to cover that additional request of the fifteen.
So.
If you want to do that, correct.
So my question is, for boards and, I'm sorry. For my, my question is, boards and commissions engagement? So if, so we are looking to put fifteen thousand dollars in advertisement for boards and commissions? Advertisement?
I, I think it was significantly less than that. So there was the fifteen for Fayetteville next that they would have up to that event specific, and then about five that we could use for promotion and marketing to recruit and retain as well our board and commission members.
Okay, so that would be the forty. I think we had the numbers, I think the numbers were told differently, that the Fayetteville next was gonna get five, and boards and commissions was gonna get fifteen. But if it's, if it's the Fayetteville next gets fifteen, and boards and commissions gets five, I'm good with that.
That is my understanding unless Mr. Yates or Ms. longer talks into it.
Yeah, because that's what I heard, is that. So can we just kind of make that decision now?
And. And we also had a request for six thousand dollars that's on this long sheet that's not on the board that was for city council funding and support of activities. And Jeff is writing that in, and so, again, I think that was for six thousand dollars, or about six hundred dollars per district. And what we can do is, if council is supportive of a part of whole of that sixty thousand for boards and commissions, that could be rolled in there as well.
All right, Councilmember Davis, where had you spoken? All right, so. Okay, Councilman Mahndros, then I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding boards and commissions piece, we got, what, twenty-six or twenty-eight city boards and commissions, including five or six that are joint with the county? I would like to look at, I mean, certainly we can make a decision today, but I would like either policy committee or appointments committee to look at the funding for all, you know, some, like the Stormwater Advisory Board, I think it's whatever funding they may use comes from Stormwater Fund. Like, let's look at all the boards and commissions, what, if any, funding requests they have. Why is it that, you know, three or four or five commissions have a budget and the rest of them don't? You know what I mean, I would like to look at that. I know some of them get a full box dinner, some of them get crackers and cheese, and some of them get nothing. So I would like to, I don't know if it's a, in a budget work session, or if we want to do it in a committee, look at boards and commissions and their budgets collectively, more holistically. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember McNair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you guys know, Lake Rim Park Pool is very busy during the summer. Last year, I emailed a council member request for, because the lines are so long, waiting to get into the swimming area. I've wanted to ask if we could have some shade installed along the walkway, because there are a lot of people that are standing out, there's some mothers in wheelchairs, and so that the sun doesn't drain them before they get into the swimming area. And I asked Michael if he can come, and I also talked with him about it. He can come and explain what it is that would suffice for that area.
I think the, the request that Councilwoman McNair is asking is that there be a shade structure along the walkway that would be made out of vinyl that we have over some of our splash pad areas. You're probably talking the length, the distance or the length that you'd like to go, somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
All right, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Yates, there's so much I've been looking at, book to book, so. As I look at bullet, the one that has additional public safety cameras, the the four thousand. And it says that it was vote, said it was voted on to include one hundred for cameras. Then it says the west side and the southwest side. This is not, well, is, because I don't see, and I was trying to find it in here. This is not a micro, okay. Let's do this. Right there, we have the micro grant increases to one hundred thousand, correct? That's a request, okay, that's my request. So, and, and we presently have what, we're presently using, what was the amount?
We have about a hundred thousand dollars for micro grants, two cycles of fifty. And there's about thirty thousand that goes to FTCC for capacity building as part of that program.
So our, our present is, is one hundred also?
Correct, so this would take it to two cycles of one hundred thousand each.
Okay, okay, i- if we can get it in. Okay, now, I didn't see it in, on the shortlist this morning. So when I was pushing for the, the community signs, that some of the communities just greatly appreciate so much, you, you told me, if I'm not mistaken, that there was about forty-five thousand that was still in the present budget. Is that correct?
So, right now.
Is that correct?
So right now, there's fifty thousand budget, and as of May twenty, the seventy-five dollars included in the twenty-five budget, there's about forty-five thousand remaining that can be rolled into next year.
Okay, so, and we're saying that with the forty-five, you're saying that that's because it wasn't a request for it, and this is just a carryover budget?
Correct, the demand for that program has that been.
All right, and so when I made the request for additional funding, and you all helped me understand, are, are you telling me it's really not a, a? a, a need since the request has been kind of low and we're carrying the, from twenty-five to twenty-six, forty-five thousand?
I would say that one of the things that we can look at, yes, and, yes and yes. So, and yes, I believe that by the remaining money still being there, I think, is Alex here? There was a, there may have been one additional cycle planned, was there Kelly or it's not? I think the best way to put it is that when the micro grant started, it was for community empowerment and enrichment around crime reduction, violent production strategies. It started off as very small micro grants, the whole goal then was working with FTCC to build capacity and strengthen those organizations to manage and request larger grants. One of the things that I think that we need to take a look at, and, and we will, is whether or not the grants that we are issuing are really having the long-term impact. One of the ones that I was very intrigued about this week, I mentioned to Assistant Strickland was the cheer camp is, but as it relates to the cheer camp, is that a crime reduction strategy or is that just a youth engagement component? And so I think that particularly with the new chief that we'll announce tomorrow in this room and our OCS folks as well as ECD, it will give us an opportunity to revamp that, to make sure we're still doing what we thought it would. And I can make the same promise to you we made about the community signs. If we run out of money with micro grants or someone comes in and says, we have X and we want to do this, we will come back to council and say we need an appropriation to restart a cycle of those.
Okay, so then are you asking, or is this headed toward, well, Mr. Here, there's no use to asking for that additional amount? That was what my question is.
I would, and, and I would say to you, if you want it, do it. But given the fact that we haven't expensed all of the money this year and we're planning to roll that over, let us use that, revamp the program and maybe, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
She's behind you.
If we can, or Sabina, if we can put a pencil in on the October work session or something like that to come back and talk to y'all about where we are with the micro grants.
Okay, then my other question is, would it help to have add an additional time period? You know, like we're doing it twice if we did it, had it open for three times a year?
I would say no for this reason. It is, the review process, the application process is somewhat labor intensive. We didn't add staff to that. We have not added staff to the neighborhood sign program. We, we wisely added staff to the homebuyers hero program, but we literally are, have started three new programs and really have not added commensurate staff to it. And, but what we could do is, to your point, we can come back and we can report on that in October as well, about whether or not three makes more sense than two.
Okay. Now, my other question is this, and I see it here, but I do not see a, a budget for it if we, let me see, how's this going? Question nine.
Mm-hmm.
Question nine, I don't see any budget unless that's it above in the sketch there. When we look at bullet, when we look at bullet six about the transparency engagement on this sheet.
Okay.
Bullet six on page three is at the top of the page.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. And, because I didn't see a budget for it, and if I can to council, over the years, over the number of years, we have had what considered these transparency engagement meetings. And they, they really weren't supported that well with communities, and we went all across the city, it was not just in one area. What my question is, are we going to try to put a budget with it to continue to move forward? Because I did hear that at several meetings, could we have more of that? Just because council, a lot of folk that we hear and we, we heard it over the last public forum, really don't want to come down in front and speak on the mic, on the camera, they'd rather have the more informal outreach meetings that I'm hearing that been somewhat very much supported the last one that we had and.
Yes, sir.
So that was my concern, because I didn't see a budget for it.
In the operating book?
And I assume that's on the parking lot, because I didn't see it up there. I see it on the list here, but I didn't see it up there.
The section you're referring to on the list, councilman, is part of the downtown district.
And, and to that point, Jeffrey, I think what you're saying is, and that's why I've asked Lauren to come up, yes and yes and yes. And so the out front meetings that we've had and we've restarted, along with the meetings that the council members are holding in the district and you ask staff to come to, they're not just the ones where it's like a community watch meeting, but it's like a district meeting and things like that. We can accommodate those largely within some of the existing budgets. But Lauren may have additional money as well for promotional items and stuff. Could you speak to that?
So that's why there's no budget attached to it.
There's no budget, because I think we can accommodate that within existing funds.
Yeah, so within my budget, within the marketing communications, the budget itself, we did ask for some additional funding for outreach events. So, community coffees with the city manager Fayetteville out front events and other types of events with that. In addition to the branding budget, which we pull, the, the giveaways and the trinkets and items like that that we give away at events.
Is it, is it allocated somewhere else, the reason it's not here?
It, it's within my budget, sir, yes.
What is that, communications?
Marketing communications, yes, sir.
And it reads marketing, it reads outreach in your marketing. It's in my big book. If I look through my big book, I'm going to see it.
I believe it is broken out specifically, but branding itself, which is what those giveaway items come from, is one line item. Advertising is one line item, and then we have food, which is specifically for community outreach items in there. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Come over and show it to me, please.
Yes, sir.
Councilman, also to your point, included in the recommended budget is two new positions, an additional PIO to help with engagement and reach out and outreach, and also a content creator to exercise, to continue to try to build on that outreach and community engagement concepts and improve and tell our story. So part of the enhancements are the new items we added in the recommended budget this year to address those changing needs. There's a couple of positions included in Lauren's, in the marcon budget that's recommended in front of you.
Okay, and my final question for right now, Mayor, is our speed sensors, what is that up underneath?
The speed radar signs.
Oh, so that's the same thing?
Yes, sir, those are the, station, those particular ones of the stationarity speed, the speed signs are about seventy-five hundred dollars a piece, give or take.
And that, is that for one or is that saying for ten?
That's for ten, about ten.
Okay. My, my only question that I was wondering, because I saw this when I was looking them up in other cities just last night, some of the cities, if this is legal, have cameras. Is that on those?
Speed sensor cameras?
Yes.
I don't think they're legal in North Carolina.
I have to do some, I have to do some research on that. It sounds like the red light cameras situation, which we know is held up in some litigation right now. Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you would, just let, let me know. I would like that to be an additive, additive, if that's, you all.
Yeah, we looked at it a few years ago, it wasn't, it wasn't legal. All right. But let me go to Councilmember Green and Davis. Oh, Green, and then I had a couple more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple, a couple of questions. The first one is, in recent conversations with DOT, we discussed some of the enhancements to the pedestrian walkways in the Haymount area specifically around the renovation of Cape Fear Regional Theater. So I just want to make sure we have in our budget for the Fort Bragg roadside where the city is responsible, that we have built in their funds to enhance in the same manner that they enhance on Morgantum Road. Because nothing would look more odd to me than one getting one way and one looking slighted on the other side. Because that is a very prevalently and heavily trafficked foot area, foot traffic area. So I would just like to know that that is in there somewhere and it's on our radar.
All right. Y'all going to answer it? Okay.
Yes, we do have that money in our operating accounts for the signs and pavement marking part of the Public Services Department.
Okay, great, thank you. Secondly, with the announcement of our new chief tomorrow, I, I know that through conversations, he, there's IT, a lot of IT in his brain. And I want to make sure as we look at camera cost and IT programs that we don't set a budget that limits him too much because he's going to have his own initiatives that he wants to follow through with. So I think it's a real concern and you probably have thought ahead of me, but I just want to put it out there so that we know that we have thought about it and we've, at least everybody's heard it out loud.
Yes, ma'am, I would, my request to council would be on this and some of the other items, when we get to them, on some pay issues would be that we allow the new chief ninety days to get their feet wet, his feet wet, and then to come back to the council after he's had a chance to do his assessment about the technology needs. Some of the technology needs which are listed on the board may or may not be able to be completed in the twelve month timeframe. And so if, but clearly if, if that's the direction of council and this gets adopted in the budget, then the staff would start working on that, procuring those and placing the cameras and getting all the necessary rights away and things like that. But I also think, to your point, it would be nice to have the chief to be able to comment on not only the technology, but the type of technology, the locations. And I would also, if Chief Joyce is here, there was, I think he said it, but I just would like him to repeat it. The tech, the cameras and other technology requirements which are listed in the parking lot, were in the parking lot because the police department did not make those requests this year. It's not that they don't need them or they don't want them, but that was not a request that they made actively this year in the budget previously. Is that a?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And so to your point though, I would say that we can definitely, the money is available to be appropriated at whatever time council chooses, either now with the adoption of the budget or to allow the new chief an opportunity to come in and say he's done an assessment.
All right, and, and council, what we could consider is specifying it where it leaves room for him to do other things, so technology, and then leave it broad so that he can fill in with.
I would just hate for us to limit, I would just hate for us to limit. Limit him, you know, because we, because the funds weren't there or they were too restrictive that we couldn't move them for something else.
And, and as we look at what we, what our role is, policy and budget, policy is the outcome that we want to employ. And the execution, they come back with, this is how we do it. They just don't want us to get too far into saying, this is what we want done and this is how we want you to do it and, and hamstring it and have the unintended consequence. So let's articulate what it is we want and then, then they'll fill it in. But council, as I make a quick point, I wanted to make sure that we all pulled out our cards from strategic planning that had what we agreed were going to be prioritized. And we know if there's not budget attached to it, that it's really not a priority, if it's not funded. And to make sure that as we go down some of these things that we are taking into account economic, enhanced economic growth. I didn't see any money in there necessarily for, for economic seeding or growth measures. I saw community development items and I saw what we do with block grant money, but I didn't see any additives for economic development, which is a priority on here. Also, you know, we're talking about the parks and rec opportunities for youth engagement. I think we need to loosen up what they can do, you know, I, I know before the, the recurring consensus was to stick X amount of dollars in pow. But if we add the money, let's loosen up to where the police department or the chief may have some ideas of how they can partner with some other youth engagement activities, but not limit the creativity of it, right? And then, but I just want to make sure we're tracking that. But I did have a couple of questions, sir. So on the project closeout, there was nine point one eight million from projects closed out where those funds were now available, which you said have already been pointed in different directions, which I do need to probably follow that roadmap. Does this represent all projects that have been closed and the funds that have available funds? This covers everything. It's not a, another list of not talking ongoing, just stuff that's complete?
That is the, that is the list that is, that we are recommending to close, that we close at the fiscal year, this year.
So, so let me repeat the question, just to make sure we're tracking the same thing. Does this represent all projects that are closed with funds remaining?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that's nine point one million. And one penny on, on the tax, according to the new values, equals how much?
Two point three four eight.
So two point three four eight, it's a six percent over revenue neutral, so that is roughly thirteen million of additional dollars. And then finally the two, two and a half to three that the county has. So if you look at nine point one eight, thirteen million, that's twenty-two, almost twenty-three, plus two to three is about twenty-five million. And we're still showing a fund balances below our, our, our goal?
The fund balances in the capital fund, in the capital funds are made up of grants and other, in some cases restricted resources. The, but they do not, are, are not part of your fund balance calculation based on your policy for calculation of the ten percent and the twelve percent. That is just the general fund, which is your operating fund.
All right, I'm, I'm tracking that. But the nine point one eight that you have listed as closeout money would go back where once the council votes to close these things?
Those are all, if you adopt the twenty-six CIP, that funding was filtered back to, within each of those funds, filtered back to projects. And in some cases, for instance, like the MacArthur Park project, it reduced the amount of money we're going to have to borrow to pay for that.
I'm, I'm tracking that.
It's going to fund projects to reduce the tax rate, if you will, on those capital funds in those other areas.
So did, did any of this money go back to the general fund? I understand money that was restricted. So, so none of this came back to the general fund? And the thirteen million additional revenues is already baked in, according to this, it's already spent. So that's twenty, twenty-two, and then, of course, we've, we've talked about the county's portion of it. So that is kind of, I guess, where, where we've got to start looking. It's roughly twenty, twenty-five million dollars of things that have been already programmed or recommended before we have any input. And then now the things that we want to have input about are challenged because of what, you're saying the amount we've got to work with.
So Mayor, I want to, I guess, make sure I understand as well. The question that Jeff answered first about the fund balance says that we are above your fund balance goal. You have three million dollars above your policy goal. And so we, it's not that we're below your fund balance.
No, I.
And so, so I just wanted to make sure that I was.
We're below, we're below the goal, right?
No, we're not below the goal. Your three million dollars.
Ten is the goal, twelve is.
And your eight hundred thousand dollar.
Ten is the law, right?
No, it's eight percent is the floor, but it's calculated differently, slightly differently. You have a, a goal of, of twelve percent, you have a policy of ten.
Right.
And so, thank you, Jeff, if I'm reading the question correctly, you have three million dollars above your policy and eight hundred thousand dollars above your goal.
Less.
So, yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Eleven point six five is less than the twelve.
Of your goal, which is twelve.
Yes.
Yes, but we are above your, so that's eight hundred thousand dollars, right?
Less.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm tracking.
So want to go back and talk about the iterative process that we put the budgets together. The first, we start with looking at your strategic plan and, and thank you, and I don't know if you had that in your book or there are others. I think Councilmember McNair wanted a copy too, if we had them, an extra one that laminated. Yeah, there you go, that's it. We start with a strategic plan to try to identify what it is that council and the directions you'd like for us to go. The staff meet and they have met, and Andy and Chris aren't here, I don't see them at the moment. But we then go through and take a look at the departments of any of those things which are on the list, which we think are going to be budget drivers. And to the extent possible, when we bring that list back to you for you to adopt the strategic plan of those goals, we identify if there are any things in there which are drivers. And to my knowledge, team, I think that everything that was a budget driver is in the recommended budget. So that answers the question. And it may not be to the level of, of that we would do, like one of the ones that you mentioned was, but again, we can definitely pull that out and tell you how we plan, this budget advances those items, and that is absolutely. absolutely the policy piece that we need from you guys to tell us you want more or less of what we're recommending in those areas, and so we can do that. We also then come and we give you the capital improvement plan, and as the mayor knows and others may not, um, will you dedicate a portion of your funding stream to pay for those capital improvement projects, and those are things which have a durable life, um, but also are over, is it fifty thousand dollars, Jeff? Um, is that the, the floor for the CIP?
Fifty or?
I was fifty. Used to be.
Fifty.
And so, those are the items that you see there. When we close out projects, um, we, I would love to bring you the projects throughout the year as they close out. We have completed the, um, Senior Center East, and we've been in that building, I, Mr. Hare, how long, um, at least a year and some change?
Over a year.
And just on your last agenda, we were doing some closeout items, some last-minute items, closeout on that, but, so it can take some time after a project is technically completed for us to be able to close those books. That likely is not in this list because we've still got some cleanup stuff that we need to do, and the question I would have to the council would be, would you want me to wait to close out Senior Center East project next year, this time, or do you want me to bring it to you when we naturally get to the point that our CFO says the project can be closed out?
Well, I remember when we had this conversation last year, I thought there was a policy we had that after everybody has signed off to say that it's complete, that it was an automatic trigger that i- if it was quarterly or.
And that's, that is exactly what, where I, where I was going with that, and so when you asked us the question, does this list represent everything that can be closed now? Jeff's answer first was a little wobbly, but he came back the second time and he said, yes. So is there any question about, is there any projects which are out there that cannot be closed, or we're not recommending closure? And I looked to my team here, and, oh, would y'all say, yes, are there any projects you're aware of? No, there are no projects that you're aware of that cannot be closed. So we've, 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 we heard you, we've done it, and we've done it in the past. Um, we had a, um, a variety of issues in finance over the years, where projects weren't being closed out on an appropriate time basis, but we are recommending, as we have for decades that we've been here, that the money that is in the CIP, when those projects close out, we try to funnel that back into CIP, because I don't know what the new rate is under the reval, but it was like four point, it's four cents, straight up?
Four cents for the general capital projects.
Yeah, for capital projects. And so we run, funnel that money back into that fund for those projects, and the transparency that council has is in the CIP on pages two thirty-nine to two forty-two, which talks about, the mayor was just reading from it, how much we're opposing that can go back to those funds, can be released from those projects, and can be reallocated. Y'all can tell us you want to use that, but that money's one-time largely, because again, it's a project that was, had money left over on it. The six cents above revenue neutral could go to support some one-time uses, because again, we're using some general, uh, some fund balance to balance the budget as we do every year for those one-time uses, but a lot of that six cent above revenue neutral is to fund things which are recurring, ongoing expenses such as salaries. And so it is not, uh, it's not to say that we just find fourteen million dollars, or thirteen million dollars, to go a below, below six, uh, to go to revenue neutral, it is saying that you're finding a recurring thirteen million dollars to cover salaries and ongoing expenses. That's the thing, that's the real struggle we acquisitions, and so when we look at what we have on the board so far that the council has indicated they want to add, um, what is that total up to about, Jeff?
Six million, it's right at six million dollars.
And so, mayor, your math was correct. So the first task, if we want to do anything with the, with the tax rate, if the council chooses, you may want to do it in two ways. You may want to say, um, from a policy perspective, um, manager and staff, we would like to go from six cents to whatever tax rate it would be, and oh, by the way, not only that, but we also want to go through the list, but we all want you to find not only six cents, we want you to find seven or eight cents, because we want to add these items in too. And that becomes the real challenge that we have. Last year, we were in this room, and the council gave us, as just, as council did, gave us the policy direction, um, which was not my recommendation at the time, but again, that's just a recommendation, that, um, on, on some pay issues, we, and I tell you every year, you're never going to hear me tell you not to pay the team, you're never going to hear me not pay the team, but we are at a crossroads, and have been for a number of years, where the drivers of our budget, um, are things which, once you put them in place, you can't pull them back. You can't pull back the salary wages that you give people. The, and the questions that we've had about the sidewalks, about putting money in the general fund, you, we, um, brought, uh, grants to the table, um, Byron, I think it was, um, FAMPO, and what was the other one we talked about? Foot, huh? Yes, the, um, LAP grants and things like that for some of the sidewalks. I am, I, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm, I regret that we didn't make a finer point with you last year, um, that we were pulling back, um, some of the, um, uh, general fund funding, but it was two years ago that we were in this room again, and we told you we were underspending our budget by almost twenty million dollars. That was not by choice, that was because we don't have, did not have the money. And so when we're trying to balance the budget, pay the staff, keep the lights on, and advance these projects, yes, we had to pull back money from the general fund, uh, for sidewalks, but we replaced some of that with the grant funding. And again, I, I thought we had communicated that clearly with council, but I would say to the mayor's point earlier, um, because this is the policy piece, mayor, if there is a desire, looking at page, um, uh, five in your budget chronicles, or question fifteen, if you look down and you'll see that, as the mayor said, that there was no general fund dollars, um, uh, for completed sidewalk projects in twenty-four or, or, or in twenty-five, if it's the council's direction that you want us in budgets moving forward to allocate a million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whatever else, that policy then becomes, just like the other ones on the pay issues, that we have to find money before we bring you back to recommended budget. But if we spend that money on sidewalks, then that's money we don't have on splashpads. If we spend the money on sidewalks, that may be money we don't have necessarily on salaries for firing police. It literally is like, um, one of those, um, squishy toys that you're pushing in one place or the other, and so the budget that we recommended to you is one that grabs as many items as we can within what we think would be a reasonable tax rate. I can go back and say, this is the lowest tax rate, if you adopt what was recommended, that the city has had in thirty years. It could be longer than that. That's just what we could find the records for with the, with the budget books upstairs when we, when we came up with that. It's a thirteen cent reduction on the current rate, and it is still almost a eight and a half million dollar reduction in what we budgeted last year. Now again, that had because some of the annexation payments and stuff like that, but we, we're happy to do any of it, but the budget exercise is one again, it starts with your strategic plan, next it goes to your CIP, we try to accommodate all of that within existing resources and the other direction that council gave us, and we present the recommended budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoot, I had two more points, I had, I had to write them down, I was going to forget about it.
Thank you.
But I, we, we appreciate that. I think, I think part of it, we, we certainly understand it, the nineteen million dollar, he, he said something that triggered a question that I didn't have, but, um, the nineteen million dollar shortfall that he talked about, was anticipating the county's changing the sales tax allocation, correct?
That was two years ago, that was anticipating some limitation on sales tax as well as intentional underspend or efficiency.
Right, but it did not, it did not anticipate additional revenue coming from the revaluation.
Well, so keep in mind, that was just in that year, so last year's budget didn't have that nineteen million dollar, uh, efficient, what we refer to as an efficiency number. It did have about ten or twelve million, um, with the frozen police officer positions, vacancy and attrition, but it didn't have that additional seven to eight million dollars of, and as Doug would say, intentional underspend.
You said did or did not?
Did not.
Okay, all right. And, and the final question I have, um, here, um, like right-of-way mowing, you, you've got that under the recurring side, right? This side is recurring, this side is one-time. So right-of-way mowing, once you allocate, appropriate four hundred thousand for additional right-of-way trash pickup and mowing, that's, that's done, so next budget year, you'll do the same, that's not like hiring a person that you would have to create a structural deficit, why is that on this side?
It is on this side, um, assuming that you would want to continue doing it every year.
But, but it's a, it's a year-by-year budget issue, so when it's done, it's funded up through the conclusion of this.
It can be moved over to the one-time.
Right.
The taxes are absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
And I just want to clarify one thing on the, um, nine point two million for the closed capital projects. Of that nine point two, almost five point eight is airport funding, and would not be eligible to be used for anything, um, anything other than airport purposes, because it's leftover federal dollars, it's, um, and there's some stormwater money mixed into that as well, that was just the total across.
What's the stormwater money?
The stormwater money is the, looks like it is, let's see, about two, two, two hundred and fifty thousand. So if you're looking at.
Six million roughly is captured in other enterprise fund.
Uh, three point four million of the nine, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, six million is captured in non-general fund type stuff.
All right, and, and do the entities enterprise funds have fund balances, or is that reflected in the budget book?
Um, they are reflected in the performance that we provided to you, um, in one of your work sessions, where we looked at it, um, your stormwater does have fund balance, the intent of that fund balance is to smooth the rate over time as we build projects. Solid Waste has a minimal operating fund balance, um, obviously to try to address fuel and equipment outages and those kinds of things. And the airport does have a project, have a fund balance as well, that is restricted to airport and airfield usage.
Gotcha, all right, um, had, uh, I guess councilman Mahndros and then mayor Pro Tim. Oh, mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have about three, I have about three questions. Uh, the first one is, um, the United Way donations, one dollar per employee, can someone explain that to me?
Yes, ma'am, that was a request that was made by the, um, director of the United Way, uh, for us to support, um, the ongoing United Way, and I assume someone put it on the list, a council member asked for it to be on the list, or to hit, how did?
So is, is that one dollar coming now of the employees' check?
It would be a general fund, and, um, I would, uh, I would not recommend that y'all fund that.
Okay, 'cause I, we, that's Pandora's box being opened up, so, yeah, so I, I, yeah. So we're gonna vote on this one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, then the next thing is, um, what I was looking at, you know, what councilmember Green said, I was doing the numbers, and I think we were all kind of thinking the same thing, since we're gonna have a new chief, but as I'm doing the numbers, it's about one point six, one point seven million in this thing that we have, so maybe we just pull that out and just say, you know, in, to come back to, to say discretion for the new chief or some.
What are you talking about, the compression?
Uh, no, no, I'm not talking about the compression, I'm talking about the POW program, the additional safety cameras, all, all of that, to have that money for.
Well, I think if, if, you know, again, if we're policy budget, if we say we want youth activities, open it up to where you can entertain his ideas within that amount.
Correct.
If you want more technology, open it up where it can be.
Right.
Yeah.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay, okay.
It just not to dig in to say, this is what it has to be, but this is what, yes, so.
We get unrestricted.
Right.
He wasn't held and bound by us.
Correct, and, and that's what I took from it, to just kind of like take that amount out. Okay, so, this is.
Go with your third.
Um, just keep in mind, at the last meeting, there was a vote for a hundred thousand dollars for specifically for cameras for the Southwest and West.
Okay, well, we're gonna still have a follow-up cleanup meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay, so I need to talk about splashpads, so everybody knows I love a splashpad, I love a splashpad, but I went and did some numbers, and, um, it, it's, it's, I thought of it one way, I did the numbers, the mayor has kind of showed me another way that I have to think of it, so I'm just gonna give all the information out, and we go from there. So, in Wake County, they have six, yes, Michael, please.
Come on up there and testify.
And, and, and as I say this, I, I, I believe that quality of life is very important, but we have to be very smart about what, about what we're doing. So, Wake County has six splashpads, seven indoor pools, could not even count how many outdoor pools they have. They have one point two million people, okay? Six splashpads, seven indoor pools.
Unlimited outdoor.
Unlimited outdoor pools. Mecklenburg, one point, almost one point three million people, eleven splashpads, three indoor pools, numerous outdoor pools. Guilford County, three splashpads, no indoor pools, three pools, three outdoor pools.
Aquatic centers, right?
Nope, they're, they're, no, zero, zero indoor, they have zero indoor.
What's this right here?
An outdoor aquatic center.
Oh.
Okay, so that's Guilford County. Durham County has two indoor pools, four splashpads, and three outdoor pools. Durham has, okay, Guilford County has five hundred and fifty thousand people, Durham County has three hundred and forty-three thousand people. Now we're gonna go to Cumberland County. Cumberland County has three, three hundred and thirty-six thousand people. We have fourteen splashpads, zero indoor pools, and four outdoor pools. Well, our domes aren't working, so what I will say is, I'm, I'm gonna give two sides of it, 'cause we really have to think this out. The one side that I sat down as I did this, I said, we have fourteen splashpads, are we a community that we do something and people say, well, they have it, I need it, I want it, you know, and it becomes that we get so narrow-minded in that we have to have a splashpad, that there's no other way to look at this, because this person has one, I have to have it, and we're not looking at the big economic picture of it, that Guilford County has three splashpads, no indoor pool, are we putting all our money into splashpads and not the big aquatic center? Now, my colleague, the mayor, to my right, says to me, they're inexpensive, they don't have anywhere to go, what do we do? So it's two sides to look at it, but do we have an overabundance of splashpads that we can give them something else, because there isn't something there for the children to do? And I would like to know the population of North Street in Toquay, 'cause I know when we did the pools, the reason why they were picked there was the population for the children. It's outdoor. We have, we have four aquatic centers.
What, a pool?
Outdoor, that aquatic center is, at, they, that is outdoor.
Michael, is a outdoor pool and aquatic center the same, in an aquatic center multiple pools?
Well, what, the, the word is natatorium, when you're talking indoor, they, they have the, the word aquatic.
Wait, 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 raise your right hand.
That's true, but, but the, the aquatic center word has moved to outdoor pools. We were using it as an aquatic indoor facility, which should be called a natatorium.
So question again, is aquatic center represent more than one outdoor pool?
No, it, it's, it's.
So one pool is an aquatic center.
Yes, it can have multiple uses, 'cause then if you go to our pools, you have a lap pool, and then you have a play area in the same environment.
Gotcha.
Mayor, I, I jumped on this a little bit, I wanted to just make sure, understand mayor Pro Tim's question, um, and I know that, um, councilmen, others have, but, um, this is, um, thank you for framing it in a way, maybe not about the pools. The thing that I, um, have shared with councilmember Davis and others too, is, is that, um, we have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that was one of the reasons that I asked Michael to come up, and at the appropriate time, I would love for us to again bring that back to council so that you can see what the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is, and if we want to do more splashpads, mayor Pro Tim and others, then we need to amend the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to reflect your wishes, so that as we are going out as a community, we know that if the mayor says that the natatorium or the so that as we are going out as a community, we know that if the mayor says that the natatorium or the, I guess that's the big one. If that's the twenty, thirty, forty million dollars, that is that.
Forty-seven million.
Is that number one on the list, is number two, because, but at the same time, mayor makes an interesting point that what the neighborhoods may want is a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar splash pad. But that should be reflected in, I believe, your adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan that y'all approved two years ago?
Three.
Three years ago, and so i- if you wanna amend it, we would wanna do that. I just wanted to add that in before, Mayor, you directed questions and comments up.
So, not, so what I will say about the splash pads, I love a splash pad, I do love a splash pad. But I think we need to, what I don't want to happen is when we talk about things with the Parks and Rec bond, things went awry when people started changing the way, we had a plan for the Parks and Rec bond. The plan got derailed and things are taking a little bit longer than expected. Now, I understand this will not come out of the Parks and Rec bond, correct?
Right.
Okay, so no derailing of, we were staying focused on that and not derailing anymore. But I think that before we make this decision on either one or two splash pads, I think that we need to go out and, and figure out, is that the best use in that community?
Alright, thank you, uh Councilmember Davis and Mahndros is back from wherever he been, in here.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I will say to the, to the North Street um park, I don't know if you guys saw the petitions that came with the request. Uh they were given out to you all um Tuesday at the meeting, but I can email those petitions to you from the um folks that live in the area now. There's two on the list because I did have a conversation with uh Mr. Gibson and we discussed the best use for the splash pad, um for that community, for the area, so Tokay was on there because Tokay seemed to be more um fitting. But you still don't have anything on the North Street park, so I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit about why we um have Tokay on there, or you know.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah.
Uh the, the conversation was about density and what our, our reflection is in the city is that if you're within three miles of aquatic anything, whether it be a splash pad or a pool, then you're within range. You can walk to your neighborhood water device. Um if you move up to, North Street is within easily three miles of Seabrook, Subook Park or Smith Recreation Center. So if somebody asks me, do we need one there, I would have to say no, cuz we don't.
Three miles?
Yeah.
You said you wanted two miles, you can't walk three miles.
No, 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 I'm talking about the radius of how we build pools, not splash pad.
Okay.
Um so if you're within that radius near a pool, then you're within somewhere that you can get to it. Um if you're talking about splash pads, then you go to where the density is. And we have a, a major park and at one time, Tokay Recreation Center was our recreation center, we only had two at one time. And if you look at the density, there is a high school, there is a middle school, there's an elementary school within walking distance of the, that park, and that's why it was built there. So you, it would stand to reason that you have walkability of a, of a large number of kids who live around it. So if, if the council agreed to do something, then Tokay would be the reasonable place to do something, not North Street.
But it's not to say that we can't put it in North Street, right?
No, it's not to say you can't.
Okay.
Michael didn't say that.
Sounds like Mayor Pro Tim wants to put a pool there, from what I'm hearing.
No, what, what Mayor Pro Tim was saying.
Saying, you said a pool.
Um what I was saying is that we have fourteen splash pads. I love a splash pad, I believe that they change lives, I've said it over and over again. But my question is, when we look at our peer cities, we have, you know, we have four times as many as Guilford County. Now, again, as the mayor said, they're inexpensive, that, they change lives because children are moving and they have something to do. I, I fully understand all that, but I can go back and we say, there's not, you know, I can go down to my district where there's not a splash pad and there's not a splash pad six miles in the radius. So there's nothing. There, there, we're not even six miles to a pool at the end of my district, and at one point you could say ten.
I'm not, I'm not. That's a little tight.
Huh?
Uh if you go to, if you go to two ninety-five and work your way back, then yeah, you probably.
Oh no, but I've got all the way up at Elliott Bridge Road now.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of Linden, so that, but that's a run.
Yeah, so, but, but again, what I'm saying is, I think we need to discuss it, I'm not against it, but is there something, something different? Because they do have one closed, I'm not saying they don't need anything, I'm saying if, if y'all want a splash pad, I'm, I'm good. But we have fourteen of them.
Yeah, but I don't wanna make this like a district thing, or this district has it, this district doesn't, but is there anything else besides a splash pad that could be potentially placed there?
At, at what side are you talking?
North Street.
Well, um at North Street, we've, we've added a shelter, a new playground unit, a walking trail, basketball courts. Um there's a baseball field there, so it's, so from a Parks and Recreation standards, it's, it's very adequate. They just don't have a water feature which is in walking distance of where the kids live. So, and, and I've, I've dealt with this, or, well, let me take that back. Strike that. I have talked about this for many years um and cannot support that. Because there are other. Yes, sir, there are other deserts of Hope Mills Road, JW Coon area, um the Tokay area um where, where there is no walkable environment for kids to get to. So if somebody said something, or you said, okay, well, Michael, we gonna do this anyway, what's the best place to do it? North Street would not be on my list.
But Tokay would be.
It would be a conversation, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, um one of the reasons that I mentioned too about the Parks Recreation Master Plan is that some have had an idea with the resurfacing that we're looking to do on the tennis courts, particularly at Tokay, and the growth and interest that the community has expressed around pickleball. That could give the council an opportunity to give us direction to say, if you're resurfacing all twelve of your tennis courts in the city of Fayetteville, we would like to have more um or something done at Tokay that's one, two, three, um so far as pickleball or not. Um or which could be an adaptive reuse of also the Tokay Fitness Center and things like that to support those type activities. But we um if we do this every budget year where we um are, and we have to be responsive, we have to be responsive, you have to be responsive to the citizens when they bring you issues. Sometimes we end up with, one of the number one goals of the community for a long time has been an auditorium. And it never seems to get the critical need for funding because we, we put a little money here, put a little money there, put a little money here, put a little money there. And um so again, whatever y'all decide, I would still like for us to bring back to you that Park Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan and Jennifer and Sabina, again, that may be an October item as well, or sooner for y'all to confirm what y'all want. Um but um we've, um as Councilmember Davis knows, we've, last year we talked about a, a, a playground equipment unit at Fire Station sixteen on Cedar Creek Road. Um there, we made a small, just name change over at um Haymont's uh park, but it was really no equipment tied into there. But a little bit of here, a little bit here, a little bit there, before you know it, we can be another five years before we start seriously talking about an auditorium as well. And I just wanna make sure we're aligned with the interest with the plan.
And the county has said that that was something on their funding model, so I don't, I don't know how serious we can get.
Yeah, yeah.
Same, same as ours, it's been talked about for ten years, so I mean, you know, if they, if they're stepping up to take the lead, we, we don't have a source of funds and we've got a list of stuff that we don't have already, so I just think that's, needs to be considered. But uh Councilman Mahndros has been patiently waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um Mr. Manager, you said something earlier that kinda jogged this question. Project closeout, so you specifically brought up Senior Center East, which has been in operation for a little over a year or thereabouts. So we got a CO, obviously. Um have all the vendors been paid, all the contractors been paid?
Uh Councilman Mahndros, you may recall at our meeting Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, um council approved um an appropriation for an additional amount that would close out the payment to the architect on the project. And that would conclude all of the payments due.
So then we can close it out?
Uh there is one, a minor outstanding um item that we're working through, but the, all the vendors will be paid.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, and then um I think the splash pad conversation and Parks and Rec Master Plan conversation is a, is a, is a great one. Um I can tell you from experience, my fourteen-year-old, he might not wanna go to the splash pad now, but when he was um like eighteen months old, as soon as he could walk, he loved the splash pads till he was about, mm, I don't know, five or six. So the, the, they're, they're popular. Um the challenge is that, that um the youth age out quick, cuz once they get to a certain point, they, they either wanna pool or sports or something more than a splash pad, but um I, I think it'd be a great conversation to have, and I'm not opposed to a October, you know, work session review of the master plan, but maybe in strategic planning next year, um we, we look at updating that plan, we really dig in and, and see where the lapses are and where we could connect, just like we do with sidewalks, trying to do connectivity, connect communities that may not have another feature, whether it's a splash pad, a pool, or just a pocket park, you know, how can we uh be more holistic instead of throwing, throwing darts here and there cuz we might miss something? And then lastly, where are we on the uh, on the board, or have we gone out of order, or are we still going? Have we got to the um right-of-way temps yet? I think we got stuck on public safety cameras unless I missed it. Because um, you know, I would, I don't know what the interest is of, of council, but I'd be willing to up that.
Before you make that point, what we did talk about is they've got it on the ongoing side, but every year that's a budget.
Yeah, I think it's about four hundred on the ongoing.
A one-time and then, cuz the next council budget, you can't automatically put it in there, it's, it's not like a, a salary, so.
Well, I, I don't know what consensus on council is, but prior to the murder spikes at, at first quarter this year, the three kinda highest complaints we always get is just overall crime in general, um speeding, and then appearance, litter, but not just litter, but actual appearance of the city. So I would be supportive of a budget of the equivalent of a penny, uh two point three five million for annual to, for us to actually staff the department where they can, at least for our eleven major thoroughfares. Um you know, not just pick up litter, but um mow the right-of-way where um these major roads are, you know, it, it's one thing if there's a residence that their home fronts on that major right-of-way. Typically, most people are gonna keep and maintain the front appearance of their home, but there's a lot of thoroughfares where the way the subdivisions are designed, it's either a side yard or a rear yard that's abutting that thoroughfare, and a lot of times those residents have a privacy fence there. So I just don't think it's reasonable to, to think that someone's gonna go outside of their property, outside of a privacy wall that could be several blocks away, depending on where they are, to the ingress and egress of their neighborhood, to mow or maintain that right-of-way. Um so what happens is it doesn't get mowed, we get resident complaints, we send them to staff, to, to our community, community engagement uh director, she sends it up the flagpole, and from my understanding from staff, that's a code enforcement issue, so it goes to code enforcement, so we get code enforcement staff. Then if they don't fix it, you know, they get a notice of violation, then it goes to legal at some point, right? Um and then, I'm just like, how much is that costing in addition to time when we could just send a crew out there, mow it and be done with it? So instead of putting four hundred in the budget and then adding another four hundred, let's just fund it for a couple million dollars and get it done, and we never have to talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mahndros, uh Councilman Mear. Mear Green Davis, Colvin.
You brought something else that I wasn't gonna. You're welcome. Thank you, thank you, uh. So let me, let, let me hit what I was thinking first, and then you may need to remind me, so I get my thoughts together. The, the lady that came before us, the resident that came before us, uh and this is to my colleague, to my right, um.
Ms. McMillan?
Okay.
Pastor McMillan?
The pastor, yes.
Yeah.
And she was talking about Nor- North Street, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I, I know that area, I have some ownership in that area. And I understand what we're saying about Tokay. So I would like to, you know, this was not today, I don't think, to have that discussion, to sit down and kind of see which way you, you can head with your, your residents over there, and how we can do some form of a su- support. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how, if it's, I understand the, the three-mile, if it's, if I understand what the director was saying, the three-mile radius, meaning as, I guess that's meaning if you can walk to a particular place from your home, I understand that. Uh but I, I would be willing to, and I'm very open to having that conversation, cuz I was already ready until we got here. I was already ready, how could we help? Um my, 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 my que- my other question is, so whenever your, whatever your lead might be to get us there to a work session or whatever. Now, um the thoroughfares and that amount there for the thoroughfares, and I don't know if you mean the thoroughfares is for us corridors or not, what was it, four hundred thousand? Okay. We need to do something with that, and if we get the funding and add additional funding, which I support, it's got to be on a regular schedule, okay, can't always be a council member calls you.
Come on, Michael.
And it's two feet high. And I know, I'm trying to stay budget, budgetified, is that a word? You see, I'll be at a meeting somewhere and I'll say budgetified and everybody go right along with, yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's a hair.
Um because, ain't, no explanation needed. I drove from Carter Street, if, if that's where it is, where it intersects Marcusson Road there at Fayette State at the Chick-fil-A. I drove from there all the way to Fort Lib- Fort, Fort Bragg. And this, I was ashamed, it was a mess, and my folk called me, and it seemed like we always have to call to get it done. It's not regu- regular, so if these fundings, this four hundred, I turned the page, but whatever the full amount was, and if we add some to it, I have no problem with it. Oh, yeah, the right-of-way, the, the uh four hundred and forty thousand, let's please, please, guys, put this on a regular. I'll just let it be regular, just get it done, why do I have to call you, why do council members have to call you?
So Mike, speak to before you address that, the amount that we added.
The people not gonna do it.
When we added these extra crews was four hundred forty thousand, if I recall, right? And so it's on a regular of a basis, cuz I'm like you, I call him probably every other day, uh about a patch of trash.
Marcusson Road is two feet high.
Right, but uh I think, well, my point is, is that the four forty, that's the, that's the service level that four forty will fund, right? And so I think he hits it regularly, but he's hitting the whole thing, so by the time he makes it back to these spots that we see, it's a week or two, right, cuz the right-of-ways look horrible, I mean, honestly, but uh I, I guess, speak to the fact that four forty is the level you're giving and what double that would look like or whatever, I guess it's.
And because, you know, Jose and Malik, that's got their, their stuff that cuts for me, they would love to sign that contract and wouldn't have no problem, would keep it cut right regular.
And so council, and before we turn it to Michael to help with that, there's a missing component, and that is how much we receive from NCDOT to maintain uh and what service level they have. Um consistently, the city has um said that the amount that we receive for funding to maintain those NCDOT right-of-ways does not meet um our community standards.
Yes, sir.
But Byron, Sheila, Brian, um how much do we receive from NCDOT uh as a reimbursement for their level of service for us, or do you know, Michael?
It's, it's a very small amount, and I'm thinking it's three times a year. Um and I wanna say that, that's what they pay for, and they don't pick, they don't pay for trash and pick up litter like that. So I'm thinking it's three or four times a year and it's probably. So I'm thinking it's three or four times a year, and it's probably, I think we get a payment of about three or four thousand dollars for every time we do it. It's not that much.
How much is it?
So, outs- outside of right-of-way, DOT also funds traffic signals for about half a million dollars to the city.
Not traffic signals, just the, the right-of-way maintenance?
Uh, to the right-of-way maintenance, it-
I don't know the number right offhand.
It's what Mike's saying.
Okay, and so this is where the mayor said, this is the policy piece, and Councilmember Mahndros outlined it, I think, very well before we turned to Michael. Um, y'all all have been out where you see Michael and his crews clean up an area for litter, and literally the mayor's called us back the next day and said we had a blowout or something has happened.
Right.
Um, the mowing is one thing, it, it is the other. This would be a great, maybe not in, at this budget setting, but throughout the year for us to come up with a level of service that would be commensurate with for you guys. But when you look at what the recommended tax rate is, which is less than forty-five cents, when you go back and you say that, and again, Councilman Mahndros put a proposal out that you want to dedicate not only whatever NCDOT gives you, but up to one penny on your tax rate, this is where the guidance is needed for us for staff. How much do we spend as an organization to fund Robert Van Gens for economic development?
That's my next question.
It's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars or thereabouts. And so when we are, this is, Mr. Here, y'all are nailing it as to where we want y'all to tell us where y'all want for policy.
Yeah, but thi- this is something that maybe also we can look at. Now, just think about this, and I threw it out there, but nobody caught it. Some of our much smaller contractors, okay, coming out of the neighborhood every morning, I hear them, you know, nice, good equipment, I mean, they're just, they're just small. Wouldn't it be a part of our direction to look at subbing to those guys, which is, it's not going to be that kind of money. I, I truly believe it won't be that kind of money, and say this, and tell them, this is what we want it to look like, if they cut it. We want it to look like this every, uh, my complex gets cut twice a month. Pick up paper the guys cut and then my maintenance, you know, whatever. What's wrong with, what's wrong with us looking at it from that perspective, other than the city that's, may not have all the staffing to get it done, to go out there and, and get it done? I mean, it's a lot of these guys out there, and then, then we can lower uh whatever the high liability it is we have on things for these guys that may not be able to afford that full, that high bond or that high insurance or whatever else that we ask them to receive.
I know it's getting a little into the weeds, so, so today, I guess if Michael can speak to the money allocation, then how we distribute it in the contract and procurement, that's probably going to be a Miss Toon thing, uh, but-
I'd like to have that discussion.
And we can actually have Miss Toon um give a report for the chronicles. We have issued RFPs multiple, uh, multiple, multiple, and have evaluated those, and we can definitely report back on that to help frame the question for future discussions.
And, and I think what, what happened before is we issued RFPs for all of it, right? And it came in that it was more than what we were doing it in-house, but, you know, Michael and I talked about this, and I brought it to council probably a couple years ago, using the same model that we have when there's a demolition, that we've got a list of people we use, you call them on a rotational basis, you know, you need to help us with All-American because, you know, we've had extra rain, or we've got a, a, a Dogwood Festival in town, so we need extra spot crews to do it, and you don't have to go through that big procurement process, because these guys that are bidding on that weren't. The bigger people that you're talking, uh, get, exclude the little folks a lot of times. They gotta buy equipment and staff, so they, they want a long-term commitment. What we're talking about is extra money, Mike, if you had twice the money, do you have twice the crew to accommodate that?
And, and let me explain now, we do have a contract out there, it's sixty thousand dollars, and they do, and we have it for a bidding process, and, and it's sixty some odd lots. There, there are some legal things that we would have to talk-
Lots or, or corridors? You're talking about neighborhood lots?
That, exactly.
So what about corridors, what we're talking about?
Exa- well, the, the issue is, and always comes to this, if you're going to be on a DOT roadway, you have to follow DOT standards, you gotta have all the insurance, you can't, we can't sub that out to somebody because we would take the legal liability if somebody get run over, something, something happened.
So these companies don't have the level of insurance?
Yeah.
Because they're doing work for DOT on a private basis?
Yeah, but you got the, there is a, there is a, and, and let's have this conversation now, because there's a, we always get to this point, and then that's where it stops. Because when you get out on DOT, it's a situation.
All right, so, all right, we need to move it, uh, but, but today is about money, so if you want to add more money, we can, and, and execution, and they'll come back with strategy. So, Councilman McGreen, Davis, Colvin, Mahndros-
Well, as my follow-up.
You're done, it's my turn.
Let's have that discussion about if it's not now, adding more money, and then what the logistics and the specs look like.
For what that will buy.
And how we can help the smaller, smaller guy get in there, because we got plenty of them uh that are very professional, they're just smaller guys.
Yeah, I agree with you. All right, Council, Councilmember Green?
Thank you, sir, it's my turn now. Councilmember Here and I go back a very long way, so you'll see us joke every here a lot. So um, to the Mayor Protem's point about the splash pads, just a quick point, what I'd like to kind of do is clean up that column. I'd like to just make a motion or cons- have consensus that we just go ahead, Councilmember Mahndros as well, that we just go ahead and move the splash pads, those two splash pad items, and I would propose that we have a September work session where we discuss that in conjunction with Dr. Hewitt's suggestion that we look at the Parks and Rec master plan. So that we, right, so that we can talk about it in a, in the appropriate manner.
So what I'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll work that list, I think you still had a couple more comments on the discussion part, I'll come back to you, and we'll, we'll, we'll need to probably see if we can condense this list today before we get out of here, so.
And then the other piece, um, Ms. McNeil, um, she probably thought she was going to get to sit over there today, and nobody was going to call her name, and guess what? I did. Um, what I'd kind of like to see in conjunction with that, maybe for this summer, because I don't think it will, it will take um as long, but maybe it would be a piece that it, it would be helpful. I recognize that the ideal situation is that a child in a neighborhood can walk to the splash pad, I understand, because trust me, I have a lot of money invested in the one on Campbell Avenue, because those two little ladies came to my father continuously. I think I've told you all that story, so there's a lot of Highland lumber company money down there in that splash pad. So um, what I was thinking about was what about offering some reduced fare or a free fare to go from a neighborhood to a splash pad, or to the Seabrook Pool, or to somewhere, um, and that, that's details is for somebody else. But it's just an idea to think a little differently about, we don't have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or nine hundred thousand to, to spend right now, but what we might could do to help for this summer to allow children to have somewhere to go, because what we're hearing with our Youth um Act and, and all of the curfew issues, we need activities for the youth. So if we can help them get to the activity, then we, we, that's half of the battle, so that's my idea.
Like that, that's, that's good. Um, did you have a comment on that, ma'am? Or, or, I mean, that's an execution, but I'll, I'll, I guess, as we talk about if, if there's budget, be thinking about what-
I didn't want to come at her sideways in the middle of a work session, I figured it was better to tell her now and- That's absolutely possible if that is council's direction, yes.
And mayor, we can actually ask Brooke to um put that in for the June ninth discussion of, we're talking about the, um, as an ad, if, after we get a little bit more direction, it could every, be everything from vouchers, um, uh, what's on North Street, the uh, housing development? Blueberry Place, if they have a, um, again, children riding the bus unattended, how old do they have to be? We can come up with some ideas and concepts around that.
All right.
Six? Six years old?
By herself?
I've got questions now. No, what is it, Mayor Protem says, I've got questions now, that's a-
Sorry.
We need to ordnance against that.
Because they wouldn't get a splash pad, if we approved it today, there wouldn't be a splash pad this summer.
Not my six-year-
So now we can get something moved.
So we, we still have a couple of follow-ups, so one, I want to speak to, um, I, I want us to re- to consider something about this North Street request, right? And, and I'm not saying that I'm not open to that, but if there is these triple-digit temperatures and there are no water contact options, unless you walk three miles currently, okay? And you have uh the Fayette Metropolitan Housing Authority's uh property, a Blueberry Place there, which you have to be low to moderate income to meet that, so you know what that means in terms of your individual transportation percentages are low. You have the surrounding neighborhood communities over there, which are high rental markets, and um there's just not a lot of public invested dollars over there. Um, what we get requests for are expanding the other things, the industrial presence, which, you know, I don't want to open that can of worms, but let's, let's think about this holistically, what options we're giving that community that may not have the means to do what some of us consider, take for granted, what's easy to do, you know? If, if it's triple-digit and you're walking somewhere to, to have a splash pad, you, you're going to burn more energy wearing your kids out, getting to the feature, and, and you gotta walk back home, so. Um, if there's some options that we come up with, um, I'm okay there, but let's, let's also look at how we equitably distribute to, to some of these neighborhoods that, that uh, that still have citizens in it that we need, but um, and uh, I wanted to, to see if, at some point after this last comment, council, if we could start to work this list, if there's just dollar appropriation. Some of this stuff takes time to design, build, bid out, so if you want to appropriate dollars, it can go to a CIP. You can say, I'll put X amount into it, leave some room for discretion for maybe some other water features. It could be something that's not as complicated as a splash pad, um, that's over there that, that spins around and gives water, that, that, you know? The kids like, like Councilmember Mahndros's kids, when, and my kids, when they were toddlers, it didn't take a lot to excite them, you know? And so you may not have to have a six hundred thousand dollar splash pad to do it, but let's think about it. Um, and, and as it relates to Tokay, let's think about the public dollars we already committing, there were, Michael wants to make that a, a mega stadium for pickleball, right? And so now we're talking, yeah, well, he, he just gave it as an option, he said that was a high pickleball use, or even him or Protem said it. I heard the conversation, I was eavesdropping. Yeah, I was eavesdropping, yeah, I was eavesdropping, but anyway, you're hustling. But, but anyway, point is, is that uh, let's make sure that we are being mindful of, of the impact of that and, and other options. I like the transportation option, there could be some other options, but let's see if we can keep this at a policy-budget level and not try to figure out the how, but let's get the why and how much concluded today, if we can.
Well, you asked, Michael, how many children? Do we have the population of what is around North Street, the population of children? Do you have that?
No, we don't.
Can you pull that before our ne- uh, at our next budget meeting?
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we can get some data. Okay, all right, all right, so go to uh, Councilman Mahndros, and then Davis, and what, you're not, not on, okay, Mahndros and then Gens, uh, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think to your point, we're going back to the um right-of-way maintenance, um, i- instead of putting a bid out for contractors, RFP or RFQ for the all eleven major thoroughfares, if we break them down by street, like, hey, put All-American out for one, put Merkison Road out for one, put Ramsey Street out for one, put Bragg Boulevard out for one, Skibbe Road, Rayford Road, that might be a easier way to crack that nut. Yeah, because I think your smaller contractors may be able to handle that instead of all of it. And then when we talk about them gearing up, including um insurance or uh bonding that NCDOT might require, Fayetteville Cumberland, uh, Entrepreneurial and Business Hub, right, in that, their purpose, we can connect those small contractors.
Kim, you want, Ms. Ms. Toon, you want to come swear on the Bible and just hit that real quickly?
I mean, we, that's the purpose, right, to help them gear up, they can help them with-
So, so, so you, just, just speak to, not, not in detail, Ms. Toon, just the things that you're doing to include uh, some of the smaller contractors if they have to do work on NCDOT, because I see people out there working on NCDOT that are not, now Barnhill didn't get the bulk of it, but, you know, I mean, other than that.
So the city manager had asked us, um, maybe I guess like last year, to look into this, um, so we met with Mr. Lee Jernigan, um, who is at NCDOT, and we had asked him about, um, were we able to um reduce the limitations for um subcontractors to bid on this project? And DOT would not approve that. They would say that that would be basically, we was taking our risk of doing that. And what happens is, is that NCDOT has specifications of what type of equipment they have to have, like the tractors, has, have the big signs on the back, and even on their mowing equipment has to be Pacific equipment. You just can't have your just normal everyday equipment, and so that's the issue that we ran into. Now, we did have um some people to respond to the um RFP, and when they did, what they did, they put the price in for them to rent that equipment from like a Sunbelt or any type of lawn company like that, and, and so those, why those bids came back so expensive. So that was what we ran into, and we did the research on that part of it.
But the smaller guys are, are participating on the, on the inner neighborhood lots and the city streets.
Exactly.
This is just the DOT corridors that we're talking about.
Yes, sir, and we do have, we do have um someone that is doing the vacant lots now.
Which, which should, should free Michael's capacity, so, okay, thank you, ma'am.
Right, and, and, but even when it comes to, um, depending on where a particular small business is, right? The hub, the business hub helps them scale up, whether it's insurance, whether it's manpower, whether it's-
JV programs, all of that.
Yeah, I mean, even a business plan to go get funding to get this equipment, so I, I definitely um think we need to harp on that. So whether we fund it extra now, I'd love that, or whether we put in strategic planning to get a whole program.
And I think policy-wise, uh, the, the larger contractors that are, that are doing business with us, that, that have the capability, we need to encourage JV participation that could help cover them, if they were working under their, under their credentials uh, to help supplement that, you know, because if we're given a, a contract to a larger, more equipped contractor, you could, you could encourage uh some of these JV options, right?
Yeah, and then-
Yeah, after uh, uh-
Lastly, lastly with the budget piece, Mr. Mayor, to your point, um, trying to work through this list, I just want to be cognizant, we got about, um, the six cent represents around fourteen or fourteen and a half million dollars. Um, but I just want us to remember that we're losing about thirteen million in the new sales tax distribution methodology, and we got about six million on the board without the additional right-of-way funding. Um, so I, as we try to work through the list, I'd be prepared to um make a motion whenever the time's appropriate to move the public safety compression, and then to move the uh right-of-way additional funding to whatever consensus of council is.
All right, and uh, you, and Mr. Here had a follow-up, and then I had, I had my original question.
Yes, sir, thanks, mayor. Uh, staying on the right-of-way, great conversation, I know we're leaning a little off uh point, but also, staff, if you all ladies behind us, if you all could go ahead and get and prepare a meeting where I would love, and whoever else, to sit down with uh Purchasing and, and uh our Director for Parks and Rec on, let's just have a discussion on this, on the questions that we would ask to see how much we could, mayor, assist those smaller guys, and also with uh the folk over at the hub at um Midtown. And also, one of the thoughts, my thoughts, uh, of course, we want to ask the Department of Transportation how they could help, and they already said that they don't want to lower the standard, but if it could be a partnership of several companies that could huddle together with those bond measures, those insurance measures, to do those kind of projects, is that possible?
So it sounds, it sounds like a good, a good work session item, I'm trying to keep us to the, to the budget, but yeah.
Yes, sir, I got you, but it was just so inviting.
Uh, yes, sir, I know, it's, it's good stuff, and, and, and I think we, we, we're doing a lot to lean in, to make sure that we're doing local uh and inclusive uh contracting, but council, I do want to bring you to, to my last point. Um, as we talked about, all of this list is about how we spend the tax money that's generated. But it comes from somewhere, and, and it is from the assessment uh of businesses and residential. Um, economic development was a pillar of ours that we've got very little um allocated for. Now, Robert has a couple of things that um, that he wanted to push into right now, our, our four hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year contribution that we share with the county. We pay a hundred and PWC pays three, or five hundred thousand, we pay a hundred and PWC pays four, okay? And so what we're actually putting into the process, that, that handles operations and what he does- And so what we're actually putting into the process, that, that handles operations and what he does. But he has been getting, and I'm on the economic development board, the reason I'm bringing this up, our community has been getting a lot of interest from defense companies and contractors that bring in higher paying jobs because of the military's presence here. And there's, there's a need for us to move into that space. We, we've got the Military Business Park. A lot of those, those people who have filled that park up are military and defense company related. And they bring six figure jobs to our community and they pay taxes. That $90 million project that's being built there with the apartments, the overnight stays, all of that is following government contracts, which is going to be a lot of government spending. But I would like to see at least 500,000, maybe over two years appropriated to economic development, FCC, EDC, to, because what he's saying we're missing in this community to really take, have a presence there is a Defense Innovation Center. I was on a conference call the other day, there's maybe giving too much public information, but there's a company from a desirable place that wants to come here and they have a huge presence in Huntsville and provide a large number of jobs. And they are six figure starting jobs. And so these kind of things, but he wanted to, to put, build more into that defense and innovation space. He said he would, he would, with extra funds, hire a Director of Strategic and Defense Innovation Partnerships. He wanted to advertise more in the, in the Triangle Business Journal, where, which is, covers the Raleigh area, which we have zero presence there. But the Triangle is pulling a lot of companies from around the country that we don't even highlight Fayetteville's interest. But the Fort Bragg and our community are working on something that's currently located at NC State now, where they test military weapons and drones. And they want to do it here because it's closer to, to the base. So I think getting this extra money to Robo will help us raise our tax base that pays for a lot of this stuff. And I, I know it's been a lot of conversation on where we spend the money, but we need to be focused on how we get the money in the first place. So I, I would like this, you know, us to consider adding as a parking lot item. We can do it over two budget years, but at least it gives 250 this year, commit it. He comes back with a plan and, and maybe another 250 after we see the success of it. Well, we would, we would give it to them with instructions, right? And, and, and because we don't have any more mega sites. So when, when Military Business Park gets full, there's one proposed site by the airport, but that's it. So if Commerce finds a job or a Toyota or some of these places, battery, particularly with the administration bringing manufacturing back here as a, as a requirement in order not to be tariffed, where are they going to land if we don't have, we don't have any sites? All right, who we have, all right, so, so Council, let's, let's have a process that we, that we worked through this. I thought there was a, a lot of good conversations. So Jeff, just to make sure we're clear, do we have the one time stuff separated properly from the recurring? So if there is a piloted option or, or a will to do something over here that could fit over there, is that?
So the, the only thing, the answer is yes. The only difference is you had mentioned bringing the right away maintenance program over to the one time side. The rest of this, we believe, would be an ongoing commitment of the city. Unless you decide otherwise that this is a pilot program for one year, then Council has that discretion.
All right, so Council, as we go through this list, I think that the consensus that we've heard that there was some agreement on was certainly right away mowing and trash pickup enhanced services, right? So I know Councilmember Mahodros talked about a penny, but maybe it's not a penny. I don't want us to get hung up on that, but it's more than the 400,000, correct? Huh? Yeah, I mean, so, so i- i- if, if there's a, there's a way to double that, that would be 800,000. Because I think if you put too much money into, into the process without Michael having the capacity, then that may cause, trigger some, some issues on his end. But what's your consensus on that? Do you want to, you want to make it a million and, and oppose to the 400?
Well, Council, I want to jump back in and say the mayor mentioned 250 for the Innovation District.
We're going to work down on the number.
250 for the Innovation District. When we, when y'all say you want to do right away mowing, and I know that's where we get complaints, we're talking about the 400,000 is to keep us at our current level of service. And so what I would, what, what I would say is we don't want to compare ourselves to other cities and things like that. If y'all say you want it in the budget, it gets in the budget and we provide that level of service. But this is, becomes the real money that we're talking about. We start looking at the other issues. And having just recently been to Raleigh for a doctor's appointment, I can tell you when you drive past Crabtree Valley Mall, that is not the level of service that they have on Glenwood that we have here. You would be embarrassed. If you, y'all would be hunting heads if y'all saw what it looks like in Raleigh in certain thoroughfares. And so I'm not saying not to do it, I'm not saying that. But to go from putting $400,000 back in the budget to maintain the current level of service to say you want to spend a million dollars or additional $600,000, that is real money. We've got to replace the elevators in this building. And the smell that you smelled when we were here on, on Tuesday night was because we had, Michael, how old, where did Michael go? Go get him.
Maybe the restroom.
But before we start with that, I, I just want to kind of get us conceptually agreed. We, we understand we got to find sources of funds and, and so we haven't even talked about cuts.
I want to go back and I want to, want to say this again. What is not in the budget, what is not in the budget is a whole list of things that we didn't even put in the budget because we did not believe we had enough money. Not that we didn't have necessarily enough support. And so when y'all talking about adding money, and again, that's y'all going to make a policy decision and you're going to run with it. But for the longest time, we have sat here and Council has asked us questions about facilities. We had to put security in this building and I don't know how much that costs with the metal detectors. We haven't even talked about what the metal detectors are going to cost at, at Festival Park. We haven't talked about the enhancements we're talking about to do with OVG and we've got some stuff with that. I would just say, again, give us the policy direction, but there are a host of security issues that, again, we didn't bring to you. And if this is one of those, then just know that that's why we don't have money in the budget in the years passed for sidewalks from general fund is because we have all of these competing demands and we're trying to squish it down. But with that said, Mayor, I, you know, of course, always yield the floor, but the money.
Well, we got, we got to be, we got to be realistic, but what, I guess what I'm trying to get us to agree upon conceptually is that we want to, if there's a desire to increase, we may not know the amount, but there's a desire to increase the level of service, maybe they can come back with a good, better, best above the 400,000, okay? And so do you want to, do you all want to try to put a dollar amount there? Or would you like to just maybe say a 25% increase and they'll come back and tell us how many extra cuts or trash pickup options that could be? Or it could be a more concentrated approach, right? That the higher traffic areas are hit more frequently than some of the lower traffic areas. That's what Raleigh doing. Yeah, when you get into Raleigh, you do see manicured trees and lawns for a minute and then it gets into the other stuff, so.
I, I think I like that better. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, for kind of bringing the reality. I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I like that concept of if a particular area has to be hit more often than another particular area, okay? I have more, I don't mean me, but I, I call it me. I have more in the Merkison Road quarter as far as curbs and, and where it needs to be cut than I do in the Bragg Boulevard area, because it's, it's not that kind of, you don't see that. So I would support looking at, where's, yeah, I would support looking at how often we cut, cut those areas, increase those areas more. And if there has to be an increase, let's have a discussion on what that amount would be, team, and how we could get there before. I, I have an issue, a real problem with putting that additional million on the residents' back. And we have no other way to, where the fund is just coming from.
So, so how about, you know, just like sidewalks, it may not be realistic that we can take the same level of spending, right? But what I'm saying is 25% or 30% more projects or more pickups or more right away mowings than, than we're getting and what that looks like financially. But some of the questions that I, that I was trying to understand, this community engagement, public records request for 100,000, where did that come from?
There is a request of a council member for us to add more support for some of the stuff that currently Michelle Sifford does for us, a high level of community engagement. She also supports me and definitely the council members when there's requests for community meetings and things like that that require a high level of service. She also manages our call center and works out of the manager's office. She has been very successful, I think, in helping us, but there was concerns about the follow through. But when it came up at, during one of the earlier budget work sessions, I also asked Council that if you were inclined to do that, where we need help. And again, it's just one of those areas that is not in the budget at the moment is we don't have a full time person to answer all of the public records requests that we have. It is shared among a variety of staff members. And we are, y'all are getting killed on Facebook, as am I, about people who are saying it takes weeks and weeks for these public records. And so if we are, and, and not only the engagement piece, but it's also if you were inclined to add it, that we would need to add it. The city clerk's office has been asking for a records clerk for several, not that many years, Jen. And there is a whole list in your, in your budget book that we gave you earlier of unfunded requests from the department. And so what I was saying is if you're inclined to make that request, that we would try to pair that with the public records request as well.
So, so Council, as we go down this list, I mean, and, and I know everybody's championing for what it is, but, but I guess this is going to be a council policy decision now. So as we go down these, if, if, if this is something that is kind of, we've got to prioritize this. So I understand that's a need and maybe there could be some automation, some AI, something that helps with that. But, you know, we need to, we need to go down this list because everybody's going to champion what it is. So we heard from the manager on that, but I'll, I'll direct the rest of these to Council. So Council, at the top of that on the ongoing funding, because anytime you talk about hiring positions. Now, the compression issue, I had proposed at one time, we did this one time before when we had a little cash on hand, but not necessarily an identified recurring source. If, if, if there could be any relief given with some one time bonus money for this year and then budget into it next year, it's an option. But we do know that police and fire compression was high on the, on the discussion list. So we, we would assume that stays, correct? And just maybe other options to get there? Is, is that, is that amenable? That if, if there's a way that, that they can present us some other options to try to bring that number down, but to still get the end result that we need, whether it's a combination of one time for the promotions that are happening this year and maybe, maybe set up for occurring, reoccurring next year, whatever. But something like that. Moving to the, the boards and commission engagement, did we, did we have a, we, we said we were going to use that on a per case, per request basis, or what's the Council's outcome on the 60,000? All of them together? So, so we'll, we'll, we'll put a little asterisk by that. So that one and the one above it are circled back.
We would need some, hopefully a little bit more clarity from y'all on the compression issue. The vote that the Council took at the last meeting was to fund the compression issues for police and not necessarily now because of recruitment issues. I think that was how it was framed. Director Clip had recommended that we do a study to globally fix it and that we were planning or had proposed as a staff to put the money to do the fix in the budget. And that once the study was done or by mid-year, we would fund it if it wasn't completed. But again, the motion was, was, was made and the Council that was still remaining voted to support. Put, how was that?
Right, and I, I, I've been having some conversations with council members and that's the way, that's not the way I heard it, me. Because if I would have heard only police, I would not have supported it. And I've had that discussion. I thought it should have been police and fire. And if it can't be police and fire.
Well, they got policing and fire on here.
No, it, it says, just a police sergeant, it says a 450, 50,000.
450 of the 1.5 was for the sergeants. So the 1.5 was not done? How, how, I must have been going.
Yeah, right. That, right. Yeah, that, that, that 1.5 up there, yes, I'm, I'm with you with that. But whenever we had that second vote and you guys had, had left, I do remember this 450,000. And I, it stated that it was for the, I thought it was police and fire. If it wasn't for police and fire, then how do we go back to pour my vote down? Because I'm not supporting if it's not police and fire. It has to be police and fire and not just police.
All right. Yes, yeah, y'all were here, I wasn't.
No, no, y'all were here when the motion passed. You, you called for the vote, Mr. Mayor. I'm willing to include them both right now. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, we could do the full 1.5 or whatever it is for, for both fire and police. And instead of doing it in actual salary, if you want to do a bonus or whatever, but I don't want to wait for the study. We need to, we need to approve that today. And then we can do the study and talk about that next year when the study's done, so.
You can walk and chew gum at the same time. I knew you could.
So I, I, I put that in a motion for the full 150. So that 450 we already approved would be part of that 1.5, fire and police compression. Whether it's in the form of a bonus or whatever.
All right, so as a motion, as a motion to, 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 to approve that, it'll either, he'll come back with either a combination of cash or one time bonuses or?
That I can tell you now, the bonus pitch just basically kicks it down the road because when we have our next round of sergeants' promotions, it exacerbates it. So if you're going to fix it, it gets fixed and it also is not part of their retirement. So, but again, this is not staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation is you do the study and that we put the money aside to implement the study.
We got you, Mr. Hare. All right, so is the motion in a second? All right, discussion, all right, show of hands, those in favor? Yeah, we, it's just quick. All right. Because we're going to run down this list just this way. All right. All right, so that stays. So put a green by that, that's, that's baked in. The community engagement, public records, let's take a, take on that. I, I don't know that I can support that until we get a little bit more clarity. I think Michelle's doing great, but if, if, if there's some automation or some IT enhancements that can help with public records requests, kind of like when people send in requests for proclamation, but yes, ma'am.
So I don't know who I asked this question to. Last time that we asked, how many public records do, do we have? I mean, I know when people say it takes a long time, but I think people need to hear how many come in. And, and I'm supporting what you're saying, but I just want people to understand how many come in, that the reason why it takes so long.
So the number is actually listed in the book. It's a KPI that's listed out off the top of my head, because I didn't reference it before I came up here. I want to say that it's close to 2,000 records per year that we get. So it's a, it's a pretty significant amount and it depends on the size of the record. A lot of them are for police records, so they have to go through legal review. So it consumes a portion of my staff time, some legal time, police legal time, CRU, the Central Records Unit over at the Police Department. Aside from that, a lot of records will go to Public and Development Services for those kind of things. And there's not a dedicated person on staff to chase those down. So it's, it's, it's a side job. So people have to research the issue, find the information, and then it goes through, depending on what it is, the legal, the legal process to get redacted if needed and then released.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry. So when somebody has a request, that, the request could be like one email or it could be a thousand emails. You know, we've had requests that people say, I want to know everything that was said about this thing for the past 10 years.
Correct. And so for an example, it could be a topic that was discussed between you and the mayor and there could be a public records request that says, I want every email interaction between the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem on topic X from January until July. And then that would take a process of going to IT and going to the server and pulling all of that information down and reviewing every single email to ensure that.
And it could be January 2012 to January 2025?
Yes, ma'am. It is, it is, it is all public record and needs to be reviewed prior to being released.
So thank you for coming up. So thank you for coming up. I just wanted everybody to understand that's listening, that it's not just a public records request that's one email or one set of minutes. It can be something that is completely years that they ask for. So thank you. And I do support what you're saying.
So for the IT folks here, are there systems that exist? I know you met yesterday with some software engineer folks that build specific software for like Fairfax, Virginia and other places. Are there software that exists, particularly with this AI strategy, that could go in with the right algorithms and say, we want to get every email from Mitch Colvin? Because I get one, I'm, I'm probably a third of that, 2,000. So, so, but are, are there, are there technologies that help with that so you don't have a physical person tied down like that?
Yes, sir. So there is, we do have some software to help us to get to that number of all the emails. There is the software that we use now that the citizens actually input their requests in. So it's kind of not a manual process for that, but once it gets to IT for that email request, we do have to go to the server and pull that information. So it does narrow it down some for us.
So is that, is that a, a process that there exists technology that could automate what IT has to go and physically pull off the server?
We can look into it further to see if there's more, but we do have some now, but we may not be the most efficient.
So council, before we hire somebody and have a, have a position that's encumbered dollars and healthcare and all of that, is it possible that, that we can maybe get more feedback on that to see if there are some options to help, help with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So moving to, we talked about, oh, the promotional 6, 6,600 for council member. What, what did y'all decide on that? I didn't, I wouldn't hear when that conversation took place, but I've heard it before. So is there consensus to, and just to make sure I understand that, we don't know the rules around it. This is for the concept. So whether it is something that is absolutely legal, according to Michelle's office, is there appetite? I guess this would be added to the council member's budget, like travel budget? I don't know. I don't know what the discussion was. I wasn't here.
Are we on the next one?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're on the 6,000. The promotional. So whether that's city coins or is that?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This was, okay, thank you. This was an item that, and, and my colleague, Mayor Pro Tem can support me and help me on that, that we looked at this twice in our policy meeting. The first time we looked at it and we brought it forward and the attorney is here too, it didn't go forward. And so at one of our meetings, some of you brought up, let's send this back to council, I mean, back to the policy committee on getting individual support per council member a certain amount. And I think this adds up to what, 650 per council member or 600? Okay, 600 per council member. For those extra things like, that we need in supporting and highlighting those that come down before us, if we want to have extra coins or extra things that hold the coins or the proclamations, you want to put your plat, your proclamation or plat, something that's very, very nice, depending on the situation. Like I, I've got some coming up with Debs and the family.
So that comes out of the city manager's office budget then, can't it?
Well, I, I'm not sure where it's coming from, but that was a discussion and now it's back to us again today. Do we want to get that support to help our residents when we bring them forward and getting those extra things or not? Please explain it, those that were in our committee.
If, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
So what we talked about in policy, this came up and it was talking about when we go out and, you know, we are with our constituents and things like that. So what, what the policy committee talked about was this budget. So when we come on council, there are things that we go to the clerk's office and say, we're going to see schoolchildren. We need pens to give them. We, we get a set of coins. We each get a certain amount of coins every year.
Promotional products.
Promotional products. But what happens is at the end of the day, if there's a budget of this, it kind of keeps us, we have a budget. Because right now, there really isn't. It is, we come on, we might get shirts. When everybody came on, we got the new logo shirts. That would come out of our budget. Correct? Things are promotional that is for us.
So the shirts would come out of the separate budget that we already budget for each year.
Right.
This would be specifically for additional coins. This would be for framing, things like that, that is adding, is above and beyond what we would normally do for a proclamation that we put into the presentation folder or something like that. It would be just like your travel accounts, that we have them separated per council member, so it's not co-mingled into one specific fund.
Right, right now, where's that coming from, Jim?
So there is a community relations budget that we have that handles all of the keys. It handles any, it has, it handles one box of coins per year because a box of coins is almost $600. And so that would be, yes.
Wow. Yes.
So those are where those things come from.
You know how much is in there?
We put, for this year, I would have to double check exactly how much I asked for, but I think it also includes a couple of dinner events that you guys traditionally go to, like the MLK brunch, things like that. So I believe it's about 4,500? I don't remember. Those numbers start to run together for me, I'm sorry.
All right, so council, what's?
600 per council member.
All right, so council, either you can, some of that's factored in, you know, of what they do. We can, we can pull some of it out, make it specific, but we just need an up or down on it so we can keep this list moving.
I support this myself.
Will it replace that? It will re?
I don't know that it, you know, y'all put a specific figure on here. I'm sure some of that she's buying coins and stuff with already out of the 4,500.
It would be, it would be in addition to.
So that's going to be a lot.
So, okay, so when we, we talked about this, I was, I was under the impression that it was, that that was going to be taken out of that part of it. So I, yeah, I say half because, you know, if you want, if we're going to get coins already, my understanding is that we did it on our own. Everything that we got to give out was up to us, like our travel budget. We didn't want to put this in our travel budget. So, because we want to make sure where we knew everything was going. So if that budget is going to stay, I can support this, but I think it needs to be half.
We currently have it set up that the community fund would stay, but if it is the pleasure of council, we can absolutely remove that and create that just 600 for each council member.
I, I think, me personally, I think probably the half would be better because then if we take that away, when we want, when we want to go as a group to support the things that we go to and have our tables, I would like to keep that because I think we do need to represent.
And, and council, I'm headed to that point, since this is a new initiative, we don't know what we're going to use over and above the, what Jennifer's budget has, because you, you asked for an increased amount?
Not to the community.
So it's always 4,500?
It is, yes, sir. This is just the new fund.
So, so council, could you, could you foresee 3,000 and then if it runs out, if we need to reappropriate another three? You can?
And that would be split among 10?
Yes.
Yes. It's just, it's just like putting, so in other words?
No, sir. And I know where you hit it. I'll, I'll do whatever happens because I want us to have that budget funding. You know, I tried to get it to come out of our travel, but for some reason, everybody thought that was strange to do.
It wasn't. There was no audit trail with the trap coming out of travel.
Well, it still is. I mean, you, when you, well.
So, so, all right. So what, what about unused travel dollars? So if, if, is there a way, if a council member says, I'm not going to use this and you're close to the budget year and you still got your travel money left and closed out?
That was what I was requesting, but for some reason.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just asking from a, where's Jeff at? From a, from a, from a, from a accounting standpoint.
I don't like that.
I think that's going to confuse it. So I guess right now, that's the how. The question is, do we want to add $6,000 for this?
So I, I'll make it easy, even easier. We'll leave it like it is. If I still want the six, but if you all decide that you want to do half, that's you guys. I'm going to stick where.
Well, we're going to take an up or down vote and that's how we get there. All right. So those in favor of the six? Okay, one, two, three. All right. Those in favor of?
And, and I had the proxy for Councilmember Thompson.
All right, I'm going to use that one.
How do we, how, how do we differentiate, differentiate this from a council slush fund? And is that even legal? That's, that's my reservation or concern.
Put rules around it, like, because it's not like we got a P card that we're out swiping this card. You got a list of things.
I want to support this. Before I do, I want to make sure, sir.
It's for citizens and, and just, and just frontward.
It's a valid question.
Well, I wanted to consider, and I had, I've heard it.
Got to be used for promotion.
Why somebody get this in back? This is, this, from my perspective, this is right down your support aisle because you've had that concern. Now here, as we're trying to give you an answer for that concern and it seem like it's getting kind of put in mesh with a whole lot of other stuff and it's.
Yep, I just, if the attorney blesses it, I'm good to go.
I would appreciate your support for it.
I don't know what a slush fund is, sir. I'll have to research that. But I think that as long as they're, you know, you have, however you appropriate it in your budgets, as long as it's within that budget item and you spend it within that, I believe we're good.
Okay. So legally, it just follows the same rules that any other expenditure. This is just appropriating the money. The staff's going to make sure it's consistent with the law, so.
Right, and legal. So do that vote again.
All right. So a show of hands, the six, 6,000?
Yes, it was six.
6,000. One, two.
Yeah.
All right, so that passes. Okay. All right, moving to?
Thank you, sir. Thanks to everybody.
Public safety cameras, I think we've talked about the importance of that with the police's budget, right? So I don't know where the 425 came from. Is that a specific number to do something, Chief? Where did the 425, 625 come from?
I thought the IT gave us.
The 425 is the ongoing cost, the period.
Anyway?
Excuse me?
Ongoing cost anyway? So with the camera system we have, that's the, that's the ongoing cost?
No, that is the, for the additional cameras. That is the ongoing cost of those additional cameras, the 800,000 at the top of the one time column, almost 900,000. That's the capital investment and the one time cost side of the camera program.
Okay, so that goes with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the eight, the total was eight, 887, which we haven't got to that size yet, but you're saying it will take 425,000 for, for ongoing maintenance?
For ongoing licensing and other costs.
All right. So I think we, we covered that the other day. All right. So council, I forgot to ask about the micro grant increase. So I heard there was some conversation earlier about that there were leftover funds and we could do an appropriation if, if we did another round of funding. What was the outcome that we ended up with?
I think, Mayor, that was what the signee said.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The leftover.
So we know the micro grants go quickly. So are we good with expanding that, particularly with this curfew that we just passed? I mean, but putting rules around it, I did hear some conversation about stuff that was specifically targeted to youth mitigation, youth violence mitigation, right? I, I heard the conversation, Mrs. Strickland, didn't you, didn't you all mention something about the, this, having a distinction between the way that it is now, kind of a low barrier community watch or, or, or Boy Scout leader can apply for the 5,000 versus some of these organizations that are providing extra activities for the kids? I mean, we don't have to have the hows, it's just.
Of course, he answers that, Mayor. If the micro grant, if, if the conception was, if the conception was better, safe improvement for the communities, then we bring these other groups in.
Yeah.
And we leave the conception of why it was brought, why we're doing it.
Agreed.
How it birthed. So we're going to bring in Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, these other groups to get pieces of it. Unless they're doing, unless they are applying to do those things, then it's different.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking, this fund exhausts itself each time you open it up, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So that's the question, council.
Oh, for the 100,000.
We're going to increase the funding. All right. Show of hands to do that. I do support that.
You saw that Brother Hondo's whispered in my ear.
Did he? Yeah, I missed that. All right.
I got that one. I'm raising high.
You, you got a lot of proxying going on, but that would pass, that would pass. All right.
You win it.
Yeah, you got a lot of invisible voting you're representing over there. All right. So moving to code enforcement, I guess this was to, so, Mr. Manager, do, do we have open positions in code enforcement now that we're looking for people for before we budget for more positions? I know we need the help, but do we have any open positions?
This was council's request and if we're not, we're recruiting for the folks, but I'm not sure how else to answer the question, Mayor.
Okay. So, so we've, we've got open positions, so this is asking us to encumber another 361,000. I do know we had enhanced service options that we were talking about, that I don't know if we have that figured out yet, so.
Well, I think the issue, councilman brought it up and they can articulate for themselves. They want it more dedicated enforcement efforts in certain parts of town. But your question, Mayor, specifically is what does the staffing look like of vacancies in code enforcement?
Yeah, I'm just thinking before we encumber another 300,000, do you have vacancies in your shop, sir?
We have one supervisor position that is currently probably going to be filled at the end of this week and we have one vacant field team person.
Other than that, you're fully staffed with electrical inspectors and?
Oh.
This is code enforcement.
This is just code enforcement.
This is not permitting and code.
All right. So yeah, I wouldn't hear for that. So council, is, is this something that we need, is this a pressing need? Do you, do you not have the people because you don't have the money or do you not have the people because we don't have the people?
We're recruit, well, we're recruiting for those.
Mayor Colvin, council, you may recall that a part of my work plan will include some code enforcement efforts and I've already communicated with Dr. Newton on that. So we're going to be working together on some new initiatives so that, that may address this in some way. I'm not sure what the interest was.
Okay. All right. All right. So we'll, we'll, we'll put a hold on that one and, all right. Expanding pow, so Mr. Yates, is this over and above the, the money?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. We had that.
Oh, Councilman Davis, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So that request for the code enforcement was one of my requests because I have a lot of, they can tell you, I've met with a lot of my residents in different parts of my district and code enforcement issues are some of our top concerns and top issues. As she stated, she also has that in her work plan and there's some other things that should be coming down the line that we're going to need assistance with. So instead of being reactive, let's be proactive with the code enforcement issues.
I, I got you on that. I, I guess what some of your strategies are, a policy or a budget related? Like, because I know there was some, 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 some things that we've been talking Like, 'cause I know there was some, 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 some things that we've been talking about, ongoing nuisances. And is that a part of what you're talking about?
I don't, I think my plan was to use the resources that we have with just some different strategies and maybe some targeted types of violations, not necessarily areas, but types of violations. We could include areas as well, but it was developing a strategy different than what we're already doing.
So Mr. Dave? So, Councilman, because what this is, this has, this has one supervisor and two code enforcement officers in this budgeted request, plus two vehicles. So in order to cover, just that's, that's a lot of muscle to cover that specific district. How does this relate to the overall?
Well, it would allow us, right now, we have nine, nine zones, districts out there. And it would allow us to, if that went through, increase the number of zones, meaning that each inspector covers less area and is able to provide more detail and coverage for that.
Okay.
Shrink the responsibility area, physical area.
But you're saying, what I've heard you say earlier, is that you, you, you believe you will be at full capacity in a month? Or what, what were you saying? That you have a person identified, you just haven't hired it, or do you have a budget problem?
But then we'll probably have to fill that position, and then we have an actual, we'll probably fill from inside, creating another position. We already have one field person out.
So that open position is a supervisor position?
We have a vacant supervisor and a vacant field person.
So this will allow us to have more officers on the street?
And I, I support that. I guess I'm just looking at, in this, in this hiring, this climate, do you want to encumber money for vehicles and trucks? Do you have vehicles for those positions you have?
I don't know about the vehicle part, but I'm sorry.
The, the positions we have now, yes.
I mean, I, I support it, I just, I just would rather, you know, this is a lot of hiring for hypothetical, and he's got a couple vacancies.
It's needed, so that's why it's present that we have it, so.
That, that green guy first.
Hey, guys, it's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally, I'm not, I'm with you. I'm, I'm not opposed to it at all. But I personally would like to see what the attorney is able to roll out and what that looks like for the department and how that can all work together in a bigger plan. And because once you hire and you shift, you've got that expense pretty much into perpetuity.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim?
So I, I agree. I'm not against this one bit. And I think that we, we are in the process of revamping. And finding people i- is a challenge and everything. But I'm just gonna take another side of this, that we're looking to spend three hundred and sixty thousand dollars on a position. And.
Cars.
In cars that is gonna be put to the side, which I think if we can find the people, we can come back and find how we can finance it. But we also have to think about, you know, at College Lakes, when we had, you know, when we had the shooting there, there was one part-time employee there. So, you know, we've really got to, I'm, I'm gonna go back. I, I agree, we need to have it done. But there's, to put three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the side of something that we might not feel when we have something else that we need to look at too. Thank you.
So, Mr. Dave, is there a possibility that you could hire a, a code enforcement person without another supervisor? Or are your supervisors at capacity? The, the open supervisor position you have now?
We, we have two supervisors, division manager and two supervisors, and then the field staff.
So this request is to stand up a whole new supervisor, division, division person and a field, and two field people?
It's, it's three positions is all, all we know about, was the request by the councilman.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess it makes a difference as to what level they are, as how much they get paid. Supervisors get paid more than field people, right?
Correct.
So I'm asking that, that what the, the need is that brought this conversation about, is that handled by, do you have the capacity for more field people? Or do you have to have all of that other structure that they report to in order to accomplish that?
Well, we, we could work with all field people, but we also, depending on how many we would come through, we'd have to look at internal admin support as well, which we're, we're at two. Handling, processing paperwork, things of that nature.
All right, so, well, Counsel, I think, Ms. Kelly, you had something?
Yes, sir. It would depend on the number of code enforcement officers that were added if we needed an additional supervisor.
Understood. All right.
How many code enforcement officers have to have a supervisor? Is it like a dentist? You have one dentist, you can have four cleaners. So you have one supervisor for two employees?
So, no, it's basically one supervisor for around four code enforcement officers. And we've got them divided up now based on the zone. So we keep a supervisor, wherever the zones are, we divide those up.
So we have nine zones?
Right.
So we have two supervisors?
Correct.
So one person has five people and one piece, person has four people.
Correct.
So if we added two, one person would have five and one would have six.
Correct.
Without a supervisor. Is that legal?
It's not a question of legality, it's a question of capacity.
Anything more than that would be pushing the limit.
How big of a territory are we talking about? Yeah, yeah, no, I know how big the, the city is, but I'm saying.
Roughly as big as a council district since there's nine council members.
So it would, it would take that much to, to just cover District Two's additional enforcement issues?
It wouldn't be just for District Two.
I understand that, I understand that. So what I'm asking, because what we're saying is we're taking a need that's this big and we're, we're addressing it with something this big. Well, what I'm saying, if, if, if you're, if the outcome that you desire is to have enforcement manpower to do it more frequently, then do you hire all these people in two cars on the front end? Or do you add?
I was gonna say.
Or do you fade it in?
Well, see, and that's the problem that we're having is that you guys don't have the same amount of issues that I'm having.
Each district's different.
Yeah, each district is different, so you can laugh and say that. But at the end of the day, those phone calls and those concerns that residents are having in their neighborhoods is an issue. And the one and only way to issue that we handle is through code enforcement. So that's why I'm advocating for this, because it's a necessity, not just for District Two, but for the city.
I mean, I, I support it, I just don't think we, we do it all at, at once. So if there's a way to add an extra enforcement officer that you could get by until, until we see what the demand is, I can, I can support something like that.
Well, I'm talking to the city attorney if I can. Your choice as to how you wanna, if you wanna add or direct them. But she and I have said that we'd love to work with, on this issue and come back maybe at the September work session. And, but, and we can definitely reallocate for some hyper enforcement in District, I don't, I don't, I don't know y'all's districts, I apologize, it's all one big city for me, to, to try to do some of those focus items, District Two, to accommodate those. And because I had occasion with the police chief and some others to go out, and we talked to residents in the Orange Street School, and it is very, very pronounced in some of the districts, some of the neighborhoods in District Two. So if y'all would give us until, if that would work for Councilmember Davis and y'all, to allow us to come back in September, and there's nothing that says that at that point in time, you could not give us direction to maybe add additional staff or whatever. But City Attorney and I believe that if we can get to September, we can come back with the refined strategies that she talked about, as well as potentially addressing some of the focused, targeted areas that we looked at in Orange Street School and in Massey Hill as well. Because when you get the calls, we get the calls too. And so if that will work for you guys, Mayor, that may be a solution. But again, it was a request of the council, and that's why it's on the board.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim and then Davis.
I'm at, I do have one question. For code enforcement, do they have, is it split up that the one person does business, commercial, and residential? So when they do their area, are they doing commercial and residential?
No, they're doing everything in that area.
Okay, so they're doing everything?
Both commercial and residential.
So, Councilmember Davis, I know that you are having a huge issue in your district with a huge commercial problem. And does commercial take more time than private, residential?
I would say no. It should be about the same.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Davis? Oh, okay, sorry about that. All right, so Counsel, let's see if we can get there. Do you want to, Mr. Manager said he would come back. There's, there's not anything that prevents us from doing a budget appropriation from this year's budget. This is just next year's with positions. But I'd like to know what we're hiring and what the need is, so is that what you're coming back with?
Well, really, supporting the city attorney's review of, as she mentioned, and she's here, so she can talk about what the review is gonna look like. But it sounds as if we're having some livability issues. The concerns are, are coming back around again from conversations with certain councilmembers about residential rental properties. And Michelle is looking at some information of what Charlotte may be doing that may be aligned with our former ramp program and other issues. So we may be able to, based on the work that she's planning to do, may be able to work with council to maybe shift our focus to some of our neighborhoods, away from some of the business corridors. But again, that's just an, an idea that, to try to help council decide whether you want to add one position or three positions or.
All right, all right, Counsel, we gotta, we gotta push this, 'cause we still got a whole other half of this to go, and I gotta get out of Charlotte. All right, I'm trying, yeah. All right, so is there a show of hands on, I don't know what we're appropriating, on waiting?
Is everybody here with that?
All right, show of hands, y'all. All right, thank y'all. Good work. We'll, we'll look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Dave. All right, I think we covered POW. Well, when we asked that question about POW, is this the regular funding level?
I would say on that as well, this is not an enhancement that the department asked about. I would ask that y'all put this aside and let the new chief come in as well and decide whether.
But, but my question is, if we don't do it, does it take the funding that we have in there for POW currently?
No, it does not. This was an enhancement.
This was addition, over and above, okay, all right. Okay, all right, the United Way. Oh, yeah, show of hands to, to remove it and wait on new chief's recommendations on youth strategies? Councilmember McNair, you good? I said, this is, this is to remove this item now for, for the POW and let the new chief come in with? Okay, all right, the United Way we talked about. Yeah, so the two, the next two were related to the two on the other side, which was splash pads. So I think we had, we had some debate about that. You want, huh? So, so could, so, how, here's a possibility, okay? Compromisingly take one off, appropriate four fifty for a splash pad to come back with Ms. Neal's extra micro transport options. If it covers Blue Street, it may be some water features that Michael can find. It's not four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth that spins around and gives some impact. So, but if you, if you take four, put four fifty, at least you have a marker there. And whether it's tokay or there, but just to have them come back with. And maybe he splits the baby and, and says, I could put one of these over here and one of these over there, and, and transit can cover something. So I'm just saying, appropriate money, which is the what, not the how, but question.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would say is, take, put one for one splash pad.
Or, or water feature.
Or water feature. But my question is, regardless if we pass the budget, there is not going to be operating expenses for, this eighty thousand dollars is not gonna be for the next year.
For this year, that's right, that's right, 'cause it's not built yet.
That's not built yet. But with that, with that being said, I, I think that we need to pull that, the eighty off, but keep for one splash pad, because we're not, it's not.
So there's the capital cost of building it, and then there's the, and maintenance of running it.
Right.
And, and because it's not built and designed or conceptualized, that you, you freeing up the eighty. Are y'all tracking that? You're tracking it?
Correct.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me. That makes sense to me. So, so is that, and, and you'll leave it flexible enough to where it, it says splash pads, water features at one of the two desired places? Are we okay with, with that pending that?
Well, I, I think there's more information that Counsel, Mayor Pro Tim asked for, for North Street as far as the population. So we can keep it on there for the same, for the two, but I think we're gonna have more discussion on North Street.
So.
It's the discussion.
I guess what I was saying was that because what we're doing now is seeing how much money's gonna be encumbered or, or where the, where the, where the delta is we gotta fill. So if we, if we appropriate four fifty for one of those two locations with some options, it left us the flexibility to get.
Okay, I can go that.
To get that back. And it freed up four hundred, four hundred and fifty plus eighty, that's five hundred and thirty off of the list.
Yeah, that's fine.
Everybody, everybody.
As long as it specifies those two locations.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, but it'll, it'll be pending on the outcomes of what they come back and say who needs what.
Right.
Okay, all right, are y'all tracking that? All right, show of hands of, of doing that? All right, so Jeff, you got that, the eighty comes off, four fifty comes off, and leaving four fifty on? With, with the flexibility of water features in either water feature and/or North Street or, or tokay? All right, so Counsel, we're doing good. So we got the develop, the development services enhancement came up at strategic planning. And that was, that can be, it doesn't have a dollar figure, so I don't, I think that's more of a policy conversation because we, we're about to go through a comprehensive review of that whole process. So I don't, I don't know that anything is needed for us, since it doesn't have a dollar figure there. But it was something that's, that we've already captured in, in the study, so any questions on it?
Um, the, Kelly? The study that we're talking about, development services enhancements, is that the AIA or the McKenzie Study? Is that what that was?
Well, 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 I saw that, I don't hear something.
Yeah, I just wondered, I wasn't sure what that, what the development services enhancements represents.
Yes, sir. I was not clear on what, what all was requested in that as well.
It, it's more of a policy piece, right? So out of the McKi, 'cause you've got the development consultant five hundred thousand on the other side already. So out of that may come some suggestions that just work to enhance the service. So it didn't have a dollar figure, it was more of a policy piece to say that we're trying to enhance and improve services. So that's why it, it didn't really impact budget conversation today.
Okay.
All right, but, but thank you for putting it, 'cause it's tracking. And, and since we're on that, the five hundred thousand was on there for the review of our, of our process.
Those are, I think those are separate items.
Yeah, I know, it's, I, I got it, but it's on, I'm, I'm just dovetailing, 'cause it, it was connected. Plus, we're at the end of the list, so I was gonna deal with it while we were over here. So Counsel, show of hands to support that. I, I know we brought it already and had, had voted on, on one of the consultants. Do you want to update us on where we are on that stuff?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. So we have a proposal from McKenzie and Company. And they're ready to come at Counsel's direction and provide some additional information and present that proposal to you all for your consideration. They could do that via Teams as soon as you give us the okay to do that. Additionally, I've been in contact with Michael Nguyen at the AIA. He has said that what they do is for free. And it's usually done by the local chapter, but our local chapter of the AIA is very small, and he's not certain of their capacity. So I have a call with him tomorrow to discuss exactly in detail what we would like.
'Cause that's a, that's a big difference between what you get out of a free versus a, a paid, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I do have the sample of what the AI, AIA did in DC, which is somewhat comparable to the McKenzie proposal. But knowing that there might be capacity and availability issues with the local chapter, he was saying that their DC chapter might have to augment and supplement the efforts of the local chapter. And so he just wanted a clearer expectation of what the deliverables and asks were of the AIA before they really said, yes, we could do something along those lines. So I'm having that conversation with him tomorrow.
Right, so, but I, I, I think supporting the effort, I, I would, I would like to see it left as a line item. I think we, we talked about it. But I see Councilmember McNair, you got your light on? Oh, pertaining to this?
No.
Okay, well, I'll come, I'll come back to you. Mayor Pro Tim, you had your light on?
Yes, thank you. So is this for the permitting and zoning one that we?
Yes, it's actually for a process mapping of site plan review, which is the first step in permitting and inspections.
Okay.
That is exactly what they did in Austin. It is the exact same study from Austin, just scaled down for our agents.
So then on this one, it says United Development Ordinance. So this will do this too?
That is something new.
Correct. Okay, so that's what I was under, that's what we're talking about now.
Well, I think it's, Councilmember Mahndras can speak to it. I think we talked about how the, the two are interconnected.
Okay, so what I was gonna say is, and I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mahndras, I'll get. This is a complete need. It is five hundred thousand dollars, and it sounds like a ton of money. It is a ton of money. But we are losing times ten amount of this every year because we haven't been able, it is so big, and we really, we need this to move Fayetteville forward and to get people in here. This is probably one of the most important things that we can do to change Fayetteville. Yes, that, this will be the biggest game changer that we are moving things.
It will certainly identify areas. It will certainly identify areas that, of the whole process to include all stakeholders. McKenzie really does try and get full buy-in of all stakeholders, internal departments and external to include our partners DOT, PWC, and they look at the entire process, um, how long it takes for each division entity to process what's going on, what they're asking for, what they're looking at. Is it really necessary? It's all encompassing.
This report will take care of probably 90% of the things on our wish list if we, if we learn it and we use it. So that, that's all that I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Ms. Councilor Honduras?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, um, to piggyback on all of that, I agree with all that with one exception. Uh, Mayor Protem, you said it might, uh, we might see a return on that 10x, it might be 100x annually.
I agree.
Um, I just, a question for Mr. Manager. In this proposed budget, we had, I think it was 450,000 for the study for the permitting and inspections piece, correct?
No, sir. That came up this spring after, um, the mayor went to a convention and found out about the study that...
But we moved it forward.
We did move it forward to review a proposal from McKenzie. We did not appropriate any money. There's, there's no money in the current year for that study.
Okay, well, thank you for that because I was under the impression we had already approved 450,000. I thought I saw that figure somewhere. But my, um, because I was going to ask for another, up to, not to exceed another 500 for the study for the UDO piece. So in my, um, opinion, from the work with staff and other consultants in the UDO committee, we need both, and, and to the mayor's, um, council member request for the permitting and inspections, the McKenzie and whatever study, um, we need both of those. We need both of those pieces, the permitting inspection and the, the UDO ordinance piece. So I'd put that in a motion right now, up to a million dollars for both studies.
Well, Ms. Kelly, let me ask you this, to, to his point. Is there, because right now what we're doing is, is we're forecasting this budget. Is there an opportunity to, to do an appropriation out of this current year's budget? It's probably a Jeff question. Fund balance or some other identified source if we wanted to add to this process, but not necessarily on the budget? Like if we... Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, it's, it's a the council's pleasure. If you could take it and do it out of fund balance for next year or do it out of money this year?
I mean, take, take like UDO, because they, you can't fix one without fixing another, right? Because you come in and you fix process, but then you've got this onerous document that didn't work good with the process. So I agree with him, you're going to need some capacity for that to expand. But do you get the sources from, can you do some source now out of this one and some source out of...
What I would suggest is, is, is the council's desire to have the million dollars combined. Let us take it back as we would with all of these and give you a funding strategy to move all of your requests forward.
All right, so I guess we just need to do, follow up on the motion to, you need a second to include UDO?
But didn't we already okay the first one?
We did, but I guess it's money time now, so I guess this is just solidifying for them to cut that one.
Yeah, I'm, it, we're in, it's economic development.
All right, the motion is second by Mayor Protem. Uh, show of hands, uh, to support, uh, the review of the UDO and, and the process simultaneously?
No, we're funding it.
Well, you had, yeah, you had five for the, for the quote, it's four something that Kelly talked, or maybe five, I don't know. But she's working on that. That, that is to, to revamp our process with the development. We voted on it as a council member request. It, no. They added, added, what we're talking now is, is adding some more capacity to include reviewing the UDO. Because if they review the process, but the UDO is the UDO, it, it may or may not go together.
And if you want to just put a placeholder dollar amount right now...
That's, that's what I mean.
Then I will try and get some quotes from folks for the UDO piece of it and hopefully have that, you know, before budget adoption, depending on when that is, but, um...
So this will be adding another 500 to the 500 as a placeholder. All right, show of hands on that, y'all? All right. I saw you, I'm voting virtually for you. Proxy vote. I got Councilmember McNair and then you. She had, she had something related to some of this.
Yeah, I want to go back to United Way donations, um, item. Can someone explain to me, um, I know a couple of you guys, uh, doesn't agree with him, uh, asking for, uh, Mr., um... Uh, I have a book of his name here. But anyway, can someone explain that to me? Why, um, I, I do believe he told me that you guys, um, supported him in the past?
Individually.
Like the employees did it. What they're doing now is the city budget would be paying instead of employees. Is that what this is the?
Yeah, he's asking for, um, I think a base donation for, as an organization, uh, representing a dollar per employee for, um, a $2,000. Um, heretofore, it has all been employee and council, because you can also make donations as well from, um... And, um, as you recall, we won an award this year and... Yeah, and, um, but this is saying that as an organization, we would commit a dollar per employee to support it.
Well, 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 I think, I think the, the way that we've done it is kind of, if he has an initiative that he wants to partner with the city on and he, you know, United Way is certainly capable of going through community development and say, hey, I want to, I want help here.
But that's not what he told me.
Because if you do this, this is just like our council colleague the other day was trying to place dollars at the table to specific people. You know, that's what the General Assembly got going on, so we don't, we don't want that. So you good, Councilmember McNair? Yeah, well, how much did we give a check for this time, this time? Yeah. Yeah, 50, $50,000, that's every year. It's a big fundraiser. And, and I think, I think he's going, and I think he would hurt himself because him... Well, he got...
He got 50 from us.
Yeah. And I think that may hurt him because some employees may think that they've already contributed and...
I just want clarity on that because, uh, it wasn't clear to me. Because he said he actually, uh, received a, a dollar per, uh, employee in the past.
Well, our, our, our fundraising is a little different, but he walks out of here with a larger check than what a dollar employee would get him, so...
Okay, last, we, we will follow up with him on that separately, but, um, of the ask, but, um, yeah, we can do that.
I just wanted clarity on that because I didn't have it.
All right, we're rolling around pretty good, y'all. So, um, the, as we, on the one side, side, the, uh, the, the first two items were covered. I think we've discussed those, the, the public safety cameras and the software it takes to, to, to maintain. Splash pad, we took care of that a moment ago with keeping one of the 450s and eliminating one. The street markings, um, 100,000 is going to be in the CIP annually. That was where they presented, uh, to, to improve the street markings. And I also saw something, a press release that said, when we passed that ordinance the other day, pedestrian and crosswalks, now DOT is having to update and restripe data. Did I read that correctly? That, uh, on the state DOT roads, that they're having something to do to comply with the, the new city ordinance?
So I wouldn't say that they're necessarily having to comply due to that ordinance or that law. It's more that they had DOT projects prioritized for those intersections already funded and that those projects have, uh, begun.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. They, they are presently taking place because I did have that discussion, uh, with DOT. So yes, they are presently taking place. If, if I could, uh, Mayor, on this item, uh, because I'm going to be asking if we don't move any faster, I'm going to have to ask a big excuse. I'm, I'm almost an hour past my 12:30 appointment that I was supposed to have been to. Um, if we look at, um, the additional street markings, I want to make sure I'm understanding that. Uh, that was another request that I asked for, for the additional 100,000. Is that, is this going to be, uh, a CP, I mean, a CIP annual installment? Is that, who, who put that statement on there? That's not what I asked for.
So that was the question back to you as a council. Um, there was 100,000 asked for.
Yes, sir.
Do you typically do those through, um, or those would be included in the CIP possibly? Is the intent for it to be 100 annually in addition to, to the six years of the CIP? Or is it a one-time funding? In which case, if it's meant to be over five years, it's 20 thou, there's some different optionality to that.
Is the 20...
So did you want it to be 100,000 annually or just a one-time injection of 100,000?
Is the 2,000, is the, um, 200,000 of five, is that the present budget?
That's currently what's, what is in your recommended CIP right now.
And have we had any to carry over as we move into 20, FY '26?
It will all carry over annual. It'll all carry over.
No, I'm saying, has this already been used? Has it been spent already to?
So, so I guess Byron, the question is, this 200,000, is that the, the level that we always recurring funded? The, this process, is that the maintenance required level that we're currently using? Because this is an enhancement question.
So the 206,000 for this fiscal year includes the striping that's going to go on the roads that we are planning to resurface as well as what we normally provide in our operating budget, which is roughly 40, 45,000.
Before you go any further, you're right. I remember now when you said the resurfacing. But the issue that I have, if we are down now to, from 40 years to, if I'm saying it correctly, to 18 years, uh, before we repave a area street, I mean, that does nothing to help the community and our senior drivers now. Wait till the street is repaved before it can get striped. So I was asking for the additional for some help. I know it will not take care of the residents throughout the city across the board. But if this budget of the 200,005, uh, oh six is only used when we are resurfacing, that doesn't help the people. That only help them when they, when, when they fall within that, uh, 18-year, getting final 18-year. Okay, now we got to, it's time for us to prioritize the streets of what's going to be repaved. So I was saying, well, if we can get 100 in there, maybe that would help a little bit.
So will it accelerate?
Outside of the 200...
So in other words, do you, if, if you had an extra 100,000, would it accelerate striping?
Yes, the previous process that we used for restriping roads outside of the resurfacing list wasn't really meeting the needs that we had prioritized previously.
Correct.
We are trying to proceed forward with a new process and any funds that you guys provide, uh, through this process would definitely be beneficial in approaching those areas that are needed.
And I do appreciate, appreciate that, so it makes sure that I'm understanding and, and all of council. So what you're saying, if I'm understanding correctly, the 200,506 dollars is only being used when you get to the point of resurfacing. That don't help the, the striping none.
Well, so, so the extra 100,000 would, would, would enhance or, or speed that up? It's kind of like I am with sidewalks. I mean, so we, we're behind, but it would help us.
Yeah, it'll speed it up, but I'm not asking for it to fall within that platform. You see what I'm saying? I'm not asking for it to fall within that 18 years.
Right, it's, from our understanding, what you're asking for is not for it to be part of the resurfacing program.
Right, 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 right.
Wanting it to be separate as a...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, every little bit helps. So that's what I'm asking for, council.
All right, council, so, uh, show of hands, uh, leave the 100,000 in for enhanced striping, uh, for, for the streets. And you all will come back with a schedule that, that hits some of the, the more pressing areas first, I guess? Okay, all right, thanks. All right, council, doing good? Um, speed radar signs, I wasn't here when that came in. Um, are these movable signs, are these?
Do we do the parking study?
Oh, yeah, parking study, okay. So whose item was that? I thought we already studied parking. All right. I don't know if I can support it if it can't tell me, we just did one. Who, whose item is this?
Uh, so Public Services Traffic Services request, uh, parking study. We have identified some deficiencies in the parking program and to better facilitate some of the operations and some of the updates that we are going to be requesting, we find that it would be best for an outside consultant to come in and, uh, assist us as our current capacity with our current staff, uh, is, is sort of stretched. We felt it was needed to come to, uh, essentially bring it to the parking lot, um, instead of trying to go through like other contract services through our normal operating budgets. And so, uh, for that, that's it in a summary elevator nutshell.
So this is a staff request?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I, I, I mean, I think we spent a lot on studies, uh, and not the execution, so I, I can't support it, so... All right, is there any, any appetite to support this? Councilmember, who y'all, y'all pointing at each other?
He can go. He answered my question. But I'll, I'll make a motion if we need to make, remove it, but...
If I, if I may, the, the, Mr. Honduras has, has, has brought up this parking conversation several times to us throughout the last few years. But it's an ongoing question to council, how are we going to manage downtown parking? And we, we bring a piecemeal approaches to this and our thought was if we could, if we could get a study to come in and even partner with our, with our county who's at least verbally said they're interested, we could get a more comprehensive approach to our downtown parking.
Well, so if I may, um, and the reason I was deferring to Councilman Davis because he and I worked on this together, um, being his district. And, and I'll, I'll just speak my concerns and, and you can add on and fill in the blanks wherever you feel to. But right now, from the downtown merchants and, and Cool Spring Downtown District and downtown lines, from the folks that have spoken with me, they're happy with the retracted hours, they're good with it. So I'm, I'm with you, Mayor. I, I don't know why we need another study. Uh, to, um, ACM Lindsay's point, you know, I'm curious to see and, and to Brian's point, the, um, I'm curious to see what the deficiencies are and what, what we could do that. But what I don't think the residents want is for the study to come back and say, oh, in order for this to make money, we got to charge $2 an hour instead of $1 an hour. That's not, I don't, that's a can of worms that, before we do that, I, I would make the motion to take this study off. So unless there's any compelling reasons otherwise, and I defer to my colleague for his perspective.
Yeah, same. Uh, I think it's going to open a can of worms. I think everybody's satisfied and, you know, when, if a new study comes back and it's increasing the pay, I'm going to get those phone calls and they're not going to be happy. So I'm willing to make a motion, if I need to make a motion to remove it.
Well, I'm going to ask for if there's support for it. If not, then it comes off automatically. But I think what we need to study is some of our ordinances that pertain to downtown. Like parking is one problem, but the rest of the stuff that has got downtown kind of not reaching its full potential, we'll talk about later. It's not a budget conversation. All right, all right, so, uh, show of hands, uh, those who want to support the study. All right, thanks, guys. All right, um...
That's me.
The radar signs, that's you?
That's me.
Okay.
So, um, that, that, that's us, I'm sorry. So what these are, Mr. Mayor, if you go into neighborhoods, you can have a machine and you stick it in front of it and it shows you how fast you're going. Um, I was corrected last week. I was under the assumption, I was always told we only had one, but there was only one per district. So we only have nine. We have 25,000 residents and each... Well, that changed. Maybe to next week you'll be, it'll be... I, well, I was liking it because next week I might get another nine. Um, so, so what I was saying is, you know, there's 25,000 residents in each of our districts. So that would make it easier for us to, if we could just take this 75,000 and get another sign, another speed tra, radar for each district. So each district will now have two.
So, so I missed all of that. Um, so do we have 20, do we have 12, or do we have 10? Nine, so nine. And what you're saying is get another nine for one more per?
Ten, now...
Well, get, so you're getting an extra 10 to go where? I mean, one per district, where's the extra one? So it's movable?
Yes, they're all movable.
But it says 10.
Oh, right, I get what you're saying.
But now a district will have two that...
So when it, when it does the speed, is it for data purposes? Because it can't issue any tickets, so what, what do y'all use it for to just kind of... So when people see it, they... So when people see it, then hopefully they'll slow down.
They slow down, I slow down.
It does do both, and I mean, it does eliminate the speed of the vehicle at the time, but it does collect the data to go back for enforcement purposes.
Jennifer, do you have the dinner menu?
Councilmember McNair?
They are movable and, um, uh, and, um, uh, we will, we could, we could definitely and will come back with information on when we've deployed it in your, in each district. Do we keep it in that level of detail, sir?
We can go back and, and see from the, the data of them where they were probably placed at.
Okay, Jennifer, can you make a note of that as a do-out for us?
We need five over District Seven. They're about to kill us over there, what?
We'll get that, chief, thank you. Appreciate you.
We, we are too. All right, council, uh, okay, that's it. All right, so the tennis courts, uh, for future resurfacing, I, I think. Yeah, need to vote on the signs, uh, show of hands for the ten signs. All right, so, all right, so.
Yes.
Tell us about the future tennis court. So we, we were raising, saying about the tennis courts we had already, now what are you impounding? Three hundred thousand for future, what, what is that?
So right now, we have a strategy to find the funding for resurfacing the Tokay, and we have the money on, with the recommended CIP to resurface the Mazarik Park Courts. So the question then was, what additional funding did the council want to add to that? Because I believe, Michael, that that resolves the resurfacing issues.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will, what?
We have Tokay and Mazarik Park is our existing tennis facilities. Those are the only two we have because we just finished Lake Rim with state money. So this funding that comes in now, um, will, will eliminate the problems that we have now, um, and then we want to have a continuous funding for future use. So you have, because tennis is just basically asphalt. You still have basketball courts that you're going to come back in and somebody going to say something about that. So we would just have a continual fund that we would just now have a regular resurfacing.
But what's been, you wouldn't impound money now for twenty-twenty-seven's budget? That's what you have on here. So you, what are you saying? You, you'll put so much up in the capital improvement plan for maintenance?
Well, I think that this was a request of council for us to come up with something, it was not what we had.
Right.
But, um, uh, and it's, it's an undefined number at the moment. So what I would propose, unless council wants to see it differently, is that we, um, work with Michael and our construction management folks to come back along the lines of, he said, what is the natural life of all of these new twelve courts that will be resurfaced? So should we be doing that every eight years and for our tracks and for our basketball courts? What is a, so that it becomes part of our base budget?
So I got that. I, I want to, I want to separate the two things. One is the surfaces, the, the courts we receive all the complaints on now, do you have the money in this budget to?
Yes, sir, the answer is yes.
Okay, and so that's not this item?
No, sir.
This is an ongoing maintenance item?
Yes.
Well, I think that needs to come off, I, I just want to make sure what's done is done and then, you know, you had a question, Mayor Bruton?
I, I do, so a hundred and ninety thousand is recommended for Tokay?
Mazarik.
Mazarik.
That's the, that, we have a hundred now that you budgeted last year.
Okay, so we need, when is that going to start?
As soon as, as soon as this hundred and ninety is made available, we will go ahead and start the process. We have a hundred now.
This is what I just asked, so, so this is the one ninety for that, for Mazarik?
Yes.
Yes, it's, we get, so it was two ninety to.
To do the whole eight courts, yeah.
And then the two twenty is for Tokay?
Yes.
Okay, and when will that start?
As soon as we get.
The new pickleball courts?
Not all, but yes, it'll start as soon as we get money.
Ninety percent will be pickleball courts and a splash pad.
We need to bring that back to y'all.
So.
And they've got FY twenty-seven for that one.
And that's FY twenty-seven, which is starting, no, that, that's a whole year away.
Yeah.
No, the, the, the funding for Tokay is not, is coming from ECD. That's what we're working on to get that done now. If you see a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the budget now, that is for the remaining funds to do Mazarik.
So what you're saying is, if we approve this, Tokay is not going to get started until twenty-twenty-seven budget?
No, ma'am, we have a, we have a plan to work with ECD to get it done now.
Okay, and those pickleball courts are going to be great. So how many tennis courts do we have working right now?
We have the, the Tennis Center.
No, no, that, if I wanted, if I had, if I wanted to go probably tennis right now, how many courts do we have?
You have, uh, uh, four and eight, yes, twelve.
That I will not trip on.
Now, see, you's adding something in.
Zero.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jump over the crack.
I know.
So Mike.
So yes, let's pass this and move on.
I think we complicating this because we've got, one is FY twenty-six, one is FY twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
That's all we're trying to get to, to understand.
Right.
Why is it reflecting two different fiscal years?
I'm, I'm not understanding why it is either, but that we had twenty-seven for Tokay in twenty-seven, we were going to do that, but we've found some funding in ECD so we can go ahead and get it done now. So if you want to eliminate the twenty-seven.
So, so the two twenty-one fifty can come off because you've got money in ECD?
Yes.
For Tokay and Mazarik?
No, Mazarik is the one ninety.
Tell me, please, why one says FY twenty-six and one says twenty-seven? Please break this down.
Absolutely. The two twenty-one fifty is in the, um, CIP in year two, so it's in twenty-twenty-seven. Well, Michael's saying is we've come up with an alternative strategy to get it funded as soon as the money's available, made available in twenty-six. If council so desires, you could take out the twenty-twenty, it's not appropriated, or the twenty-twenty-seven amount, it's not appropriated, it's just in the plan. So that is part of our ongoing program. It was there for information purposes, but right now, if you move forward with the budget as recommended, there is funding to do Tokay and there is funding to do Mazarik Park resurfacing.
And, okay, so that's what we need to write up there. The twenty-twenty-seven, you're going to come back with a capital maintenance plan?
That'll come next, as part of next year's budget.
So that needs to be.
So just for an update on the Tokay Court, um, ECD has just located, um, or identified two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of CDBG funding.
Yeah.
Resurfaced those four courts. They've done a preliminary environmental study, which is required by HOE to do use CDBG funding, and it passed, so we are currently moving forward with, as we speak, with resurfacing the four courts. So if it takes two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to resurface four courts and there are eight courts at Mazarik, let's be certain that we have enough money in the CIP to do the eight courts.
Which is another two sixty-five? Yeah, I'm comfortable.
All right, wait, wait. So the total amount required to do Mazarik and Tokay is what?
Two ninety and, and two thirty, and two sixty-five is how much? Five hundred and?
Four hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, four twenty.
Not two ninety and two sixty?
No, that's, that's four hundred and, that's five hundred thousand, five hundred some odd thousand dollars.
Yeah, five fifty.
That's how much it going to cost.
Okay, all right, so you got two sixty-five coming from ECD?
Yep.
You got a hundred that you had in there already?
Yes, sir.
That's three sixty-five.
And a hundred and ninety.
And a hundred and ninety.
Yep.
That's four sixty-five, that's it, right?
That's it.
So the one ninety, so we can scratch off the two twenty.
For twenty-seven, count, count, cut, cut that.
The twenty-twenty-six, council can talk about the twenty-twenty-seven budget.
Please.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we're clear on that? Show of hands?
Everybody raised their hand.
You needed to raise your hand in the beginning of the conversation.
And then we'll come back and vote on pickleball courts.
All right, so, uh, other funds, um, a hundred thousand for water quality for Stormwater Enterprise, what, what's that? I wasn't here for that. Oh. Okay, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I was waiting on the mic. It's for the quality side, so there's different nettings that, that you could buy at different outfalls. Actually, City of Fayetteville staff had built, um, a, a contraption, it was called the Frog, I think, wasn't it? That was developed by NC State grad that they used, I think it got destroyed in one of the storms. I've seen them in other cities be made out of, um, chain link fence, they just put like a rectangle or square, um, right at an outfall. And what it does when the water goes through these outfalls, it catches like plastic bottles, trash, and then you just go and get it out. The nets, you just take them, I think they're disposable. The, um, the, uh, chain link fence one would have to be constructed and then somebody has to go in and clean it out, but I don't think this is the, um, the how. I think it's just earmarking a hun, up to a hundred grand of Stormwater Enterprise Fund money, which is supposed to be for the quality and the quantity side, right? For staff to come back to us and, and let them make the recommendations on what kind of contraptions we use.
So does this, is this a, a, an allowable expense out of the Stormwater Fund?
I believe that, I believe it is an appropriate expense from Stormwater.
Yeah, because we're doing, um, you know, we're focusing on the watershed studies and, and all the stuff on the quantity side, which for good reason, right? But when we look back at Stormwater from its inception back around nineteen eighty-five from the EPA, it was always really started from the quality side. And some, some municipalities, they break, Byron, correct me if I'm wrong, they break the, um, quantity and quality and usually like engineering department does quantity and Stormwater focuses only on the quality. Ours is combined, which is fine, but we're not really doing, we do do inspections, I shouldn't say we don't do anything, but we're not doing stuff like this on the quality side. Byron, I'd love to hear your position on that.
Yeah, so in, in our operating budget, we do have water quality measures, so, um, we, we inspect outfalls, uh, inspect restaurants, uh, we manage the beavers, uh, we have illicit discharge program. I think this hundred thousand dollars was for a specific water quality, um, can, in, in addition to what we're doing, a specific water quality measure, uh, that we're going to research and, um, if it, if it's earmarked for this, we'll research locations and, and, and material and type. I think ideally we present it to SWAB, get their buy-in and then come back to council and say, you appropriated a hundred thousand dollars for this water quality measure, this is what we're coming up with, do y'all approve of us moving forward?
And Byron, y'all, y'all have a fun balance over there, right? So, so this is, this won't be a general fund, but I, I'm, I support it. It's coming out of Stormwater, which you can only use it for Stormwater anyway, so. All right, all right, council? Oh, what, what about the economic development piece? Yeah, I do. All right, so show of hands on the economic, I mean, on the Stormwater? All right, and then I need a show of hands just to make it official, because he's going to recap all this for the economic development, um, seating conversation we talked about.
And you also had Lake Rim pool shading?
The what?
The Lake Rim pool shading.
I didn't know anything about that, what, what, is that yours?
But, but doesn't Michael have that in his budget?
Yes, he got a fun balance.
He's got, he's got, he can do that in his budget.
How much is your fun balance out of Parks and Rec?
The county portion's about one point three million.
Oh.
And that's out at Lake Rim, which is in the county, right?
You're going to throw some shade in a minute.
We going to get you your shade.
You got a million dollars?
Yes, sir. Yeah, but, but now, we annex the area. The county does not have any residents in that environment, so you can't use their money.
So there's no unincorporated area close to that?
I think we should go to Hope County and ask them for it, because we get enough people that come for it.
No, sir, there is no doughnut holes.
Okay, all right, all right, but Mike runs a fun balance anyways, he can find this. So he'll come back, he'll come back with a, uh, identified source of funding. All right, I support it. Who supports Michael finding this money, uh, out of his existing budget? Dino, for the shade? All right, Mike, you got it. Where's Adam? Adam? You got it. All right, so we're going to recap, just make sure we clear, y'all, because when this comes back for this last cleanup meeting, it's going to be cleaner than this. All right, council, council, last, last little bit. All right, let's recap it, and Jennifer's taking notes. Let me take my picture of this so we don't.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll take this list, I'm going to go through the items and we will come up with a balancing strategy now for you. You have the micro grants approved, the public safety compression approved at one point five million and change. You have the promotional items for council, the boards and commission sixty thousand. You have the public safety cameras, you can't do, you have to, these go in tandem with the one-time pieces. We have the right-of-way, we're going to, if it's okay, council, leave that at four forty for right now, and then Michael's going to bring back some options. That is all that was on the ongoing list. The one-time was public safety cameras and.
Excuse me, Jeff? Jeff? Did I misunderstand what you just said or? Because I had six thousand for, um, the council, but I heard you say sixty, did you?
Um, six thousand for the promotional items and sixty for boards and commission engagement.
Okay, so you did have both, sorry.
It's for the, it's for, um, it's for, um, Fayetteville Youth Council and we voted on that, yes. Yes, it was for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, the Fayetteville Nets, and then the five thousand for the marketing. Do we need to vote on it?